All right, so welcome to a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 30th, 2022. This is a continuation of the special meeting that started yesterday, Monday, August 29th. And Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie is having technical issues. Vice Mayor Chow?
Uh, here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. And I know for the record, Madam City Clerk, that Councilmember Willie is visually here, but he apparently can't hear what we're saying here. So hopefully he'll reset fairly soon. Okay, let's go ahead and continue the item. And that was item two on the original agenda from yesterday evening. We have a brief summary of where we're at. But to just briefly place everyone in terms of the various examinations of the 16 maps that are on our list of areas of the city that have Tier One or Tier Two sites that are proposed. We are done with, I believe, 10 of those maps now. So we have gone through maps A through J, and we will subsequently go through maps K, L, and M, and then we'll take public comment. And then we will go through maps N, O, and P, and then we'll take public comment again. And then from last night, we have two additional sites that were suggested by members of council. I believe they are maps 22 and 13, based upon the original enumerated designator. And so for the benefit of the members of the public that are here, the differentiation between the maps that are enumerated, you know, 1 through 26, and the maps that are put in order A through P, 1 through 26 were the original maps that comprised the entirety of our city. 10 of those maps did not have Tier One or Tier Two suggested sites. And so we ended up looking at 16 of those maps. And we're going from east to west across the city per the recommendation and the assessment of the Planning Commission when they visited this. And so what we have done is that we have gone through the first eight maps. That would be A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H. That would be A through H. We took public comment. And then time was looking pretty good last night, and we took a public comment after going through maps I and J as well. So just, you know, in case you're curious, the enumeration of maps 1 through 26 was simply by alphabetical order with regard to how the maps are named. So they weren't kind of geographically arranged. And so that's how you get the original naming of those maps when you have them enumerated. But when you have them listed as alphabet letters, A through P, or 16 letters of the alphabet right now, that's generally from east to west through the city. So to remind everyone, we are now on map K. We will be looking at K, L, M, and N, O, P. And I believe that our Madam City Manager would like to provide a summary of what staff has done in follow-up after yesterday's hearing from the public and also the follow-ups from council. Madam City Manager? And Madam City Manager? Yeah, we can't hear you, I don't think. Uh, we can see you.
Can you hear me now?
You know, yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and apologizing on my multiple accounts of technical difficulties, but we're here. So to follow up on my closing remark to council last night, I do want to bring to attention to the council that just about maybe half an hour ago, we have sent out two documents to you. One is a summary of all the comments and recommendations and feedback that staff received from last night's comments, from last night's meeting. We will be making this a live document as the continuation of the feedback and the conversation goes on. Planning staff will continue to enumerate the items and then will respectfully ask for recess or as to consolidate that so the council can include this list into your motion should you choose to do so. A separate document that was sent to you includes the correction that, as I mentioned last night, for Vice Mayor Chow's request to add the skate bridge. And we also went ahead and correct the height for the density and also the Tier One versus Tier Two indication for each of the map for the purpose of not going back in time. So I went ahead and sent council the presentation so you could look at it. Hopefully, I know it's a very short amount of time before we start on slide 47, when Lou continues with the rest of the area. I also want to bring to council's attention that we will be discussing the two new added sites, the office space and also the outback side towards the end of the area, and also council can provide more feedback. Mind you, given that we have very limited amount of time, please excuse the roughness of these maps that are kind of just put together very last minute. So if there's any typos, mistakes, or, you know, correction that needs to be made, please excuse them. So with that said, I want to turn that to Luke, who will be presenting the rest of the area map, starting on slide 47. Thank you, Luke.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Paul, members of the City Council. You've just run a summarize briefly. We won't have a long opening presentation like last evening, but for anybody who may have not attended last evening, we're showing a slide right now that lists all of the 16 areas that the mayor referred to. We went through the first 10 of those last evening, showing the potential housing sites, the Tier Two sites, which we'll get into again tonight. Those are not recommended, but we went through the first 10 of those, ending on South The Anza. So we will be starting off this evening on the west side of Cupertino with the Jollyman Neighborhood. The sites we're going to be going through tonight, if you look at that table for the number of units, many of these have much lower unit totals and generally fewer sites than what we were looking at yesterday evening. Could maybe move to the next slide? Oh, okay, it's right at Jollyman here. Let's see. Okay, the Jollyman Neighborhood, which again is on the west side, we have four properties, 6A, B, C, and D. These have different density recommendations across the board. 6A is 20 units per acre. 6B is 30. 6C is 10, and 6D is 30. These were based on Planning Commission recommendations. I see in the table for 6C, the density is there, but we don't have a total number of units. The total number of units in that table should be three. This is a small residential property. It's about a third of an acre, so it would accommodate three units at that density. All of the Jollyman sites, if you are to look at the map, the Tier One sites are shown in yellow. They all have red dots on them, the red dots indicating that we have owner interest for all of these sites. We have also one of our pipeline projects is on the south side of McClellan. So there's five total sites there. And for anyone watching last night too, on the table, it may be difficult to see where we have target density and target height. The heights have been corrected to reflect, to correspond to the densities, unlike last night. So when we're talking about a 30-unit-per-acre site, we have a height of 45 feet. And on the right, the individual acreage, which you'll see on each one of the slides tonight, is also reflected. So with that, I would be happy to open this up to any questions we have about any particular properties.
Luke, before we do that, I'd like to ask you this updated slide deck that you have. Is that available to the members of the public at this time? And if so, where?
I believe it is. We just got this, again, as the City Manager had said about a half an hour ago, we completed all of the corrections. I believe this is available. Let me check if it just went out to council members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And I, City Clerk, can you confirm that this has been received and sent out to the council members?
I am going to post right now.
Thank you.
And posted.
Okay.
The council members should have just received it too. I apologize.
How about the public?
I'm going to post it right now for the public.
Okay. Well, just to back up, and I apologize if this is irregularly, you know, procedured, but let's just try to get this part of the information out there. So Kirsten, you sent an email to us, I think at 5:09, and that should, us being the council, that should include a PowerPoint presentation that has these updated slides. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, and now you're posting this. So basically, the new information that the members of the public are able to see on their Zoom screen, but are not necessarily able to see on the presentation from yesterday is going to be posted momentarily. And so I guess the new information looks like it is the site address and the number of acres of each site. Is that accurate, City Manager?
Maybe if I could answer that, Mayor Paul, the individual acreage that are shown, that's new information. And on this slide, the owner interest is shown. I believe that the original presentation, the owner interest was not indicated because all of these sites had owner interest.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, I won't delve too much into that. So it's fair to say that for the rest of the sites that we'll be looking at on first impression, K through P, that if there was owner interest, there will be a red dot on the site in the map. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, okay, great. All right, so let's go to our members of council for questions. I'm going to go ahead and set the same time parameters for this initial round. I see Vice Mayor Chow, as well as Councilmember Moore have hands up. And so we'll each have three minutes. Vice Mayor Chow, you are up.
Thank you. I think we did ask for information about the pipeline project. So this one, is that approved or not yet? What's the current zoning? What's current use? What's approved, what's the proposed zoning and use?
Through the mayor, Vice Mayor Chow, you brought up a good point. As we realized that there's really very little time available between last night and to get this information ready, we did as much as we can, but we cannot come to a full, comprehensive information on what you've requested. We can follow up and provide that to you.
Is that information somewhere in the packet? Because there are so many documents. It might be somewhere. And if I can have to look through them, that's fine. One of the attachment?
If I'm right, through the mayor?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes. So this particular pipeline project is a single-family residential development. It is a density of 1 to 5 dwelling units to the acre. They can develop 60 units on the site, which they are proposing to develop. It is expected that this would go to Planning Commission on September 13th, I believe. And following that, it'll be a review by council.
But what I mean is, is this information available somewhere in the packet? So I don't have to ask each time to save time?
I don't believe it is. The information about this going to Planning Commission is a part of the packet, but the data about the background is not in the packet at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, about a minute and a half of your time, Vice Mayor Chow. So let's go ahead and move on to Councilmember Moore, and then we'll follow on with Councilmember Way.
Great, thank you. Okay, so because we just got some new documents, all I was going to ask for was about two minutes so I can get my stuff off the printer, because I've got a new slide deck printed out and so that members of the public can also get situated. I think it might help so that we're all on the same page, looking at these documents. And I haven't had a chance to read through the text document that we also have. So I would like to be able to scan that, skim it pretty quickly.
Well, let me stop you there, Councilmember. I think that's an excellent idea. I have 5:17 on my clock. Let's just start up again at 5:20 so that we have a moment to get situated here. So it's not really a break, just a brief pause in the proceedings. I haven't started your time. So we'll see you in a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
At least one other council member here. But I'll go by names. Councilmember Moore, as well as Councilmember Way are both here. So let's go ahead. Since we were starting with Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Willie, hello. And Councilmember Moore, are you?
I had no, pardon, Mayor. I had no questions. I just wanted to get my stack of papers. All right, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Let's go to Councilmember Way for questions on map K.
I don't have any questions, not now, but I did see my package. If we're looking at the pipeline project, I think in our package number, page five, there's not the details, but how many units in all the pipeline projects? Just for Vice Mayor Chow, if you want a list of pipeline project, how many units? No details. It's on page five of our package.
Yeah, I mean, the pipeline projects, I think it was, I want to say, Attachment E. There was a table there that had a pretty good summary. But yeah, and that was available yesterday. I'm looking at page 171 of the original packet. I'm not exactly sure. I think it's E. Let me take a quick look here. Yeah, it's not, it's not actually labeled in the packet. So but yeah, I think it's, yeah, it's E. It's Attachment E, second page of it, or super enumerated 171. There's some pretty decent info there. Okay, let me see. Do we have further hands raised? Councilmember Way, did you have any further comments or questions? No? Okay. What I see is a hand up from Councilmember Moore at this time. Councilmember Moore, did you want to ask questions on map K?
I actually do have a question. I want to make sure, because it's kind of covered over, that that pipeline project is P8? Is that correct? And I believe that is. And 20860 McClellan Road. That was something that came to the Environmental Review Committee and the, some of the comments from the public, including a housing commissioner speaking for themselves only, was that the number of units was really low. So I'm curious if I have the right pipeline project. Is it P8? My table says 12 units. I thought when it came to the ERC, we were looking at six. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. Do I have the right number here? P7, Bianchi, I'm not sure how to pronounce it. Bianchi Way has six. P8, 20860 McClellan, showing 12. I thought McClellan was only six, and it was like single-family residential going in there. It was a pretty large site. I did a site visit as well. If anyone wants to jump in and fill me in, please do.
Yeah, yes, I'll take a stab at that, Councilmember Moore. Yeah, I believe this site is a little bit over an acre. It does not have full approvals yet. I recently received an email from the developer as well, who has some interest in developing more units on the site and would be consistent with the McClellan corridor. Many of the sites were recommended at a density of about 20 units per acre. So I don't believe he has revised the project, but we have been contacted about having more units than what was originally proposed on that property. It's just not definite at this time if he was going to up the density on that.
Okay, so just to describe this area off of McClellan Road, it's kind of interesting. It's not a typical, there's a little cul-de-sac that comes off of McClellan, and it's not typical pavement. It has like a very nice paver stones there, really nice. About four houses are on the east side of the cul-de-sac. And on the west side is the fence along the property, which right now has a house and a large, long, red barn and a lot of storage of vehicles on the site. Lots of old cars inside and around on the property. So it's kind of interesting, because one side of the cul-de-sac has been developed with single-family homes. And like I said, I believe there's just four. And then on the other side, they would be developing. In the plan set that came to the ERC, had, I believe, six single-family residents. But we, the members of the public seem to think, and I tend to agree, that the site could have quite a bit more density. But it is kind of an interesting development for where the access is coming off of. It looks like they're coming off of the cul-de-sac and not off of McClellan Road. Right now, there is access to McClellan. So interesting project, but we're showing it at 12 as a pipeline project. Okay.
If I could just clarify that, I believe that 12 is a result of six single-family homes with six ADUs. So that would get you the total of 12. But as I said, within the last month, I've received an email from the developer, who has expressed an interest in potentially going up to 20 or more units on the site.
Okay, so further about this site, to the, directly adjacent to the west is a church property, I believe. But it isn't single-family residential, just adjacent to the west. And then to the east, as I mentioned, you have the four single-family residences. Okay, so I don't know if they're, well, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, if they choose to put more at that site. So do we need to?
I'm providing you a minute and a half of my time, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Do we need to, if they're interested in more, does that? I'm a little concerned, like, does this really belong as a pipeline project at this point? If we're still kind of negotiating with the number of units that would be there?
I can try to answer that. This is one of the interesting questions with pipeline, because I think, as we said last night, six of the sites are fully entitled and ready to go with no changes planned. Three of them do not have full entitlements. So it raises a question of there's an application on file, so it is definitely in the pipeline. But because we're now going through the housing element exercise, where densities are potentially being raised, this could be a site that has a revised plan that increases the units, may even double them. We're showing 12 now. You could conceivably have 24 units at a density of 20 per acre, which is what we would look at as a typical density along McClellan. So it does raise a legitimate question about should this be listed as a Tier One property or a pipeline? We've left it as a pipeline site, because the application on file calls for six single-family homes and six ADUs. But it could conceivably develop at a higher density than that.
This is a very conservative 12.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's wrap there. Okay, thank you. Anyone else at this time? Councilmember Willie or Councilmember Way? Okay, great. So let me start my clock here. On the topic of pipeline projects, will the pipeline, I'm assuming the answer is no, but let me clarify this. Are pipeline projects being included in the projects that are subject to the SEQA here? For this? I guess that's, you know, I'm thinking that's no, because pipeline projects have their own process, right?
I think in the case of a project like this, where you don't have the full entitlements yet, it would be viewed, it doesn't have a SEQA clearance yet, because it doesn't have its approvals. Whereas the other six projects that are fully entitled, they already have gone through their SEQA process.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess for that purpose, right? It's probably good to stick it into Tier One, or, you know, if we think that it's kind of secondary in terms of our current consideration in Tier Two and, you know, activate SEQA and EIR for, you know, that particular property. Because that helps the property along, right? With regard to being able to be identified as part of the housing element. Would that be pretty reasonable? And also, within the nine pipeline projects, I'm assuming maybe there are a couple like that, right? But maybe this is the only one where we might want to put that into. Sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Sorry, I should raise my hand. I'll change. But I mean, if the property is going to be entitled in the near future, it will go through whatever SEQA process that needs to, you know, well in advance of the finalization of the EIR for the housing element. So I mean, the EIR for the housing element is really going to cover properties that need to be rezoned after the housing element is adopted, or when the housing element is adopted. So I would expect, yeah. I would expect, based on the timeline for this project, that there will be a separate SEQA process.
Got it. Okay. And the separate SEQA process for this particular parcel would probably be a lot faster, is what you're saying. That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, they're quite far.
Sorry, you blipped out, at least on my speaker. They're quite what already?
They're quite far along in their SEQA process.
They're quite far along. Okay, okay, great. All righty, that was my follow-on question there. Took two and a half minutes, but that's totally good. Councilmember Moore. So actually, I guess I must have borrowed from either Councilmember Willie or Councilmember Way's time, because it occurs to me that I only had about a minute and a half left after I seated my 90-second seat. So let me check back in before I go to Vice Mayor Chow and then Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Way, or Councilmember Willie. First of all, sorry to ask forgiveness and permission, but is it okay if I, you know, grab one of your minutes for the purpose of this? Okay.
Good with me, Mayor Paul.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Did you have any follow-on? Did you have any questions at this point or comments? Still not okay?
Yes, because you touched on the EIR issue. And I would like to understand, when the six projects are mentioned, we know that Valco did not have an EIR. And the 2014 EIR anticipated 800 units at Valco and 2 million square feet of office and 600,000 square feet of retail. Now, and you can tell, looking at the traffic study from that EIR, that they put all that density at that location. Now, over the years, I've heard some explanations saying, oh, well, the whole.
So Councilmember Moore, I was going to give you about, you know, maybe 15 seconds to wind up on that one, but it's been 30. And, you know, just out of politeness, let me go ahead and grab a little bit more time from Councilmember Way or Councilmember Willie, because we're in this tranche, right? With, for fairness, three minutes each. And Vice Mayor Chow is prior to you in the line, and you had, you know, exhausted your three minutes. So rather than, you know, kind of have you go on on that one, why don't you hold that, you know, in abeyance for now? Let me go to Councilmember Willie or Way. Can I grab your guys' time for map K? Okay, so I see a head nod from Councilmember Willie, as well as Councilmember Way. Okay, great. So we've got five minutes to work with. But let me go to Vice Mayor Chow first. We hear you, Councilmember Moore, on the topic that you're bringing up. Just, you know, wait a moment on that one. And then Vice Mayor Chow, did you have a follow-on at this time? You still actually have about a minute and a half of your time left.
Oh, I keep asking the information about pipeline project, because I think they really deserve to be considered at the same, as equal footing as the other projects, especially these are projects with strong owner interest to develop. And we know that there are projects, even approved ones, they come back and propose a proposal. Even like Westport, they used to have a project that was approved and expired, and then they come back, they propose a new proposal. So excluding them from the process seems not fair. So I wonder whether the EIR could include pipeline projects, approved or not, at the comparable density as the other housing element, so we can at least study them. Then in one year, when we finalize this, maybe some of the pipeline projects would like to be. Then in one year, when we finalize this, maybe some of the pipeline projects would like to be considered for the studied density, then we have the opportunity to consider whether to quit that request or not. That makes sense, yeah.
You have attorney, um, city attorney Jensen with a hand raised, Chris.
Yeah, so the I'm so the so the pipeline projects really shouldn't be thought of as part of this process, right? What we're what we're hearing, we're trying to come up with an inventory of additional sites to to zone for um to to accommodate housing. So, you know, the pipeline projects have either already been um rezoned or entitled or are in the process of of being um entitled and or rezoned. So, you know, by the time this ER EIR is is done, you know, this pipeline project are going to have passed in through a separate SEQA process. Uh, in some cases, they'll be considered part of the baseline for the SEQA process and not part of the project. And so it it's really better if we keep those two, try to keep those two things separate in our mind base then.
Okay, thanks very much.
Can I respond a little bit? If if the PA is one point three five acres, I looked it up. And if it's zoned at twenty units per acre, that's twenty-seven units it can accommodate. The proposal right now is only six units. That's a huge difference. And now these property owners who are on the housing element, they are receiving minimum density, some of them don't like. But this property owner maybe would like to develop to develop with twenty-seven units. How come we are excluding them from this opportunity?
You know, it's not actually, it's not ac- it's not actually a huge difference. I mean, we have four thousand, forty-five hundred units in our our um arena, so twenty-one units is is a pretty small number. You know, but they'll, you know, they'll they'll have the opportunity to go through that process. And I mean, I think Luke mentioned that he's having discussions with them now, but, you know, that information isn't isn't firm at this time. If 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 they they are interested in increasing the density, we might get additional units, but, you know, I I think spending a lot of time over small numbers of units is probably not super productive.
But I think every little bit counts.
Okay, let's let's try to make sure you don't talk over, I I don't care who it is, but don't talk over. You know, well, I guess especially B, so I could, you know, manage this meeting. So Andy, did you have uh anything to say here?
Just just briefly, uh, just just to add uh with what Chris is saying, I think it's helpful to think of the pipeline projects as the existing condition. That's what it's considered uh regarding SEQA. And for any additional sites that can be built beyond what was approved as a pipeline project, those are considered um sort of bonus, so that just uh enables us, sort of like the buffer does, to be more flexible with our other sites.
Okay, so let's go go on. Um, John, I think your time is pretty much exhausted, but for thirty seconds, um, I I you're divvying it up and uh we might have another round here. Councilmember Moore, you had a question that you had started with regard to with regard to Valco and and the pipeline and EIR issue. You know, please, please feel free to proceed, and we have about a couple and a half minutes left in uh in this round of questions.
Okay, uh, yeah, so something I want to point out that that we're we're, that we're hearing here is that the baseline includes the pipeline project, that the pipeline projects are being considered the existing condition. So the existing condition is if the Valco project, the rise, is already built. So you know what's gonna happen? You're not gonna have noticeable, significant impacts from the rest of these projects that we have coming in the city. Because we're imagining that that whole project is there with all of the traffic, with all of the people, with everything. Okay, I I I'm I'm really surprised at that. It it just, so our EIR for the city never studied it. Never studied it in the twenty fourteen EIR for the last general plan. And now, because of this SB thirty-five, our EIR is is essentially pretending the whole thing is built. I think uh and everything else that that we have in the pipeline, but in particular, having that one thing, you know, that that's that's really interesting. I hope I hope my fellow councilmembers grasp that entirely for what that means for an EIR, that that's the baseline.
Okay, um, thanks, Councilmember Moore. And Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised. Did you want to?
Yeah, I'll just say that I've always had a pretty strong uh concern about the impact to the community. I share Councilman Moore's uh thoughts on that. I I appreciate her eloquently describing it that, yes, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. And Councilmember Way, I take it that you are all set, or did you want to say something before we move on?
I'm good. I I just uh believe that we need to concentrate on the process we're doing right now. Thank you.
I hear you. Um, but, you know, let's just uh uh bear with as we're, you know, all kind of readjusting to the uh computer environment and also uh yeah, I I have my own configuration. I I have my own sort of like, uh, I I try to go with portrait mode on one of my screens, and I was just like, ah, you know. So um, but but I think we're doing well. I you you know, I I get we have our comments, but, you know, kind of I I think we'll we'll shake it, you know, uh off and uh get get on uh with the next map. And so uh we'll uh we'll get into the swing of things here. So um, why don't we go on to map L? And so Luke, and, you know, Madam City Manager, we're all learning each other's styles as well. You know, feel free to interject if you want me to go ahead and go through you with regard to talking to uh the staff, but I just, you know, I I think maybe keep a synergistic flow if that uh works out. Okay, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, absolutely. So Luke, why don't we uh go on to map L and provide that brief uh intro to that?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. Uh, this is the Monovista South neighborhood. We only have a few more neighborhoods um after this one. As you can see, there are four sites, A, B, C, and D. Site B on is also on Cleo Avenue, is with site A, it is an undeveloped property. Uh, the other sites are all residential. The uh several have, three of them, they're have existing residences on them. The last site, eight D at Rainbow Drive, has a, as you can see, a density projected at just five units per acre. That's because it is on the extreme west and has uh slope issues, uh which would make it a much tougher site to develop at a higher density. So again, fewer sites and fewer total units here. Um, as you can see as well, like the last slide, though, we have a lot of owner interest. All of all of these sites have uh owner support to be on the housing sites list. Uh, that is really all I have to add on this slide. I am happy to turn it back to the city council for discussion.
Thank you, Luke. And would anyone like to start us off on that discussion? Okay, I don't see hands raised, but let me go to the participants level. I have a I have a question about a site and I'd been in communication with the property owner uh after seeing him this past weekend. And there's lots of familiarity with our city staff. I mean, not necessarily, you know, the 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 CDD staff that's involved, you know, particularly with this process, um, I don't know, um, but there's a property owner that has a very significant amount of land along Dorothy Ann Way, which, uh, if you can read uh the street that kind of curves a little bit, yeah, it's a little bit like a sideways smile exactly where where that arrow is. And uh when I asked him about, you know, whether he had, you know, talked about the housing element, he he said no. O- over the years, frankly, you know, his his whole narrative with me is, well, you know, staff is basically getting on my case about this and that, right? So um, and by over the years, I I I mean, you know, it's probably five or six years that he's been telling me about, you know, various things, but I mean, I I've been outside, looked at it, it's it's a very significant amount of space. And so, you know, to the point of, you know, what some of my colleagues have been mentioning uh yesterday, uh, y- you know, if I'm talking kind of you know, by happenstance to an an owner and that person seems a bit surprised us to the entirety of the process. And he actually came in, you know, last night live uh and and watched our meeting for a little bit. I'm just wondering, you know, what are are, is there a recourse at this time, or, you know? Perhaps someone on, you know, our CDD staff that's here, you know, knows what property I'm talking about, might be able to say, you know, why that you know, might not work out, but, uh, you know, for me, I only have so many, you know, direct uh touches into the various properties, but but I know that this is very significant properties, and so that's that's what I'd like to focus my line of inquiry on uh regard to this.
I I can start with that.
Yes, pew, hi.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, good evening, council. The um, the particular property that you're referencing is a uh is on the National Historic Registry and on the State Registry. And as a result, we weren't looking at that particular site um for the increased density. In fact, when the Seven Springs Ranch was redeveloped, a lot of that density from that site was also allocated to the uh small, that single-family home development at the base of it. And so when they did um uh the uh density calculations, the density from that particular site was transferred to the uh the flatter part of that property at the time. And so uh multiple um structures on that site is also within the um on the registry.
Right, right. Well, I mean, I I don't want that to be a bugaboo or, you know, kind of catchword that like kind of makes us, you know, beg off in 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 the entirety. I mean, I'm assuming that the entirety of the land uh is not on the national.
I believe the whole site is, but that is something that we can revisit, but uh when we last looked at it, I believe it was. It's it's the nature of the uh the property itself that is of historic nature.
Okay, so the entire, and you happen to know how much acreage uh that's like?
Don't off the top of my head, sir.
Okay, okay. I I would look into it a little bit more carefully, because I know that over the years, there there has been some work done on the property or attempted to be, correct?
Sadly, not all of it was kosher, but yes, there has been some work done.
Right, right. So so something can be done. Um, I guess the question really is, you know. But but you have no idea how big it is.
No, we don't have any idea, because like I said, the site was considered a historic site.
I mean, it's got to be on the order of more than five acres, right? I mean, does that sound about right, or are we kind of all?
I wouldn't be able to hazard a guess without looking into it, and we haven't looked at it since we initially did our first set.
Okay. I mean, I'm just kind of eyeballing this map here and, you know, kind of estimating based upon the scale of the streets, right? But in any event, I mean, it's 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 interesting um when I look at it. Well, um, Councilmember Way, you have your hand raised next.
Um, yes, I have a specific question on A, D. Point four-three acres, why is it only one unit?
Uh, this is the Rainbow Drive property.
Right.
Yeah, I think because uh again, we're the the slope issues on the site. They um, they do limit it, but at a density of five per acre, you're correct, we should at least have the capacity for two, possibly three units.
If I may jump in as well, I don't believe that the current density is five dwelling units to the acre. I believe it is a slope density formula for the hillside. This is hillside property. So based on the um, the existing general plan designations of hillside, what's surrounding it and everything that kind of uh it is around it, um, this particular, we're actually upzoning it from a hillside designation to the five dwelling unit to the acre, which would allow it to subdivide. To add one more unit on it. I think without the um, the change in the general plan density, it couldn't even add that one additional unit.
So it has four now, so add one additional, so it's five units total?
No, no, it has one now, it would add one more.
Oh, okay, so it's get to two. Um, so if they decide to do ADUs, would that add more units?
There would, that would be a total of four then, or three, a new, three new, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. That's a minute and a half your time, and I see Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, you're next.
Yeah, I'm curious about the same property too. So all they wish to do is to subdivide the property?
Correct. So yes, this is, I I maybe I understand where you're going with this, uh, Vice Mayor, that they could use potentially SB nine to do it. And um they could potentially do that as well, once once we upzone them, that is a possibility down the road.
Um, I'm just wondering, uh, there was another property who also requested uh subdividing, and they couldn't do it under current SB nine ordinance. So they could have requested to be added as housing element site in order to do a similar thing with what this Rainbow Drive property is receiving.
So I, uh, actually, that property, I believe that you're talking about, could subdivide um uh under SB nine. They just don't like the configuration of the subdivision that SB nine would have allowed.
Yes, so if they do it through the housing element, they can do the black lot uh configuration, right? They are not limited by the SB nine restrictions.
So I guess it is up to the council to decide policy on whether it wishes to move forward with black dot subdivisions or not. Um, I I
And this has nothing to do with black dot for SB nine. My question is regarding whether the this, that property owner could be eligible to apply for it to be added on the housing element site and then receive on a a certain proper zoning designation so that he can build two units in whatever division he proposed. And the council then, of course, would have to approve. So that's a valid path for them, right?
That is a valid path for them, yes.
Okay, but that's what I want to clarify. And but this path was never suggested to them, I think.
It was, a general plan amendment was suggested to them. I would not suggest doing a general plan amendment for one property in that particular.
No, what I mean suggested for them to be added as housing elements.
Right.
Like this one. I didn't know we considered this minor sites too. So they, that, so we have not suggested to that property owner, they could have requested to add their site as well of the housing element site, right?
Right, but you know, uh, as as uh your city planner, I would not recommend, actually, we did not recommend. We actually talked to the planning commission about this particular site as well, and we were recommending not to have sites where we would generate just one unit and add that to the inventory, but that was not the decision.
But isn't this one here?
That was the decision that the planning commission made at the time, yeah.
Okay, I'm confused that we are saying no to some people, but we are saying yes to another person. Just, I'm trying to comprehend, trying to be fair to everyone, so we don't have different standard. Yeah, thank you.
That that is time of, but um, I'll uh go on to Councilmember Moore at this time.
I I just have a clarifying question. Um, so I have the printout from yesterday, and what was the reason for eight A changing from no new units to seven? That's Cleo Avenue, eight A? I'm fine with it, I just want to understand.
I believe the reason was because it was mistakenly classified on the inventory. And I think this was in our corrections list in the packet yesterday, that it was listed as a tier-two property. And we did, and we did not calculate the number of units for any tier-two properties. It should have been tier one, so if it was a mistake on the inventory, this is correct. The owner did request to be included, and the planning commission uh classified it as tier one.
Okay, uh, is that all, Councilmember Moore? Oh, no, no, I can't hear you. You might be muted.
Oh, I am, I am muted. I I don't believe I've spoken on this um item, my first round.
No, you have not. You have not spoken on it. But did you want, did you have more questions or follow-up comments?
No, if if uh the Vice Mayor is out of time, I'd like to yield the rest of mine to her.
Okay, so we'll circle back after we provide Councilmember Willie. Okay, so we'll circle back after we provide, uh, Councilmember Willie an opportunity. Uh, Councilmember Willie? Oh, and, uh, you have, uh, two minutes and fifteen seconds remaining, Councilmember. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be just kind of, uh, brief, you know. I share Vice Mayor's concern. We're doing the housing element for the entire city. I believe we have to be consistent, even if it's only adding one unit. It's for us to pick and choose when an owner has expressed interest in adding his site, even if it is only for one unit. I, I feel we have to treat everybody fairly. I'll leave it at that and I'll also cede my time.
Uh, Councilmember Willie, if, if you don't mind, I'd like to have half a minute of your time. Is that okay? Uh, okay, you're nodding and so, um, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, great. So that's, uh, two and a half minutes remaining. So let me just edit my notes here. All right. So I was the first to start. I'm gonna stay on this, um, and I'm just going to with this thirty seconds, I, I'm on the N P S dot gov website, what are, what are the restrictions, rules, regulations for historic property owners? Under federal law, the listing of property in the National Register of Places, uh, places no restrictions on what a non-federal owner may do with their property up to and including destruction. Unless the property is involved in project that receives federal assistance, usually funding or licensing permitting. So I would like to have some clarity, um, with regard to the standards that we're applying here. So, um, uh, just let, let, let's just kind of follow that i- is my request down. Uh, it's, it's an exological course of avenue and, and get a sense of what, what the restrictions truly are there. Um, Vice Mayor Chow, did you want to continue with your, uh, line of, uh, comments and questions at this time?
If there, um, I just want to understand this. So A and B is on target is for thirty units per acre and then C is fifteen units per acre. Just trying to understand, uh, the rationale for deciding this density.
If I can, on the, the Regner Road site, um, similarly, being way to the west, has some slope issues, even though it, it, there's a fairly flat portion of the site, but it does limit the amount of density um, on that property relative to say Cleo Avenue where you have a flat property. I mean, that's really the reason why Cleo has a density twice as high. Uh, the Regner Road site, I believe that was, um, the density was increased at the planning commission. I think it was listed at five units per acre when we took it to the planning commission and housing commission at the end of June. Um, so the commission felt strongly about trying to get more units there and that density was actually increased on Regner.
And what's the current use for eight B, which has no address and no unit there?
Eight B is an undeveloped parcel right now.
And so all of these parcels have a single family homes that is sent to them?
Yeah, except for eight B, correct.
So eight B doesn't have adjacent properties?
There are adjacent properties that are developed, but it, it is a vacant lot.
Then thirty units per acre would be forty five B in height with how much setback? Is there a required setback from their neighboring property?
I'm sure, there would, there would be a required setback. I, I recognize too, this is a kind of an oddly shaped lot that I think when it develops.
Sorry, that's Councilmember Moore's time. Um, you have two minutes remaining of Councilmember Willie's time, Vice Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, I'm just keeping timekeeper.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. So in terms of, uh, setback, we don't have a current, uh, standard on setback on these properties right now. That's something we should consider when we when E I R comes back and we actually resolve. And then we will see what would be a realistic units per acre for odd shape site.
Yes, and right now I believe it's in the P R three zoning district, so all properties have development standards, um, associated with them. I'm just saying that once this were to be rezoned and you'd have a density going up to thirty units per acre, the, the setback, once it's developed, would likely be different than what's shown today.
Hmm. So right now the setback is similar to single family homes?
Um, offhand with the R three setback, I'm not sure if that's a five foot side yard setback. But, you know, it's, it's a multi-family zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that, that means thirty, thirty seconds of Councilmember Willie's time. Councilmember Way, did you have any follow ups at this time? Um, okay, so let's go on to map M. I'll go ahead and remind our members of the public that we are taking public comment after map M. Uh, it's not necessarily relegated just to maps K L and M, uh, however, I guess it would be logical to speak to those if, uh, that's fresh on everyone's minds. Um, Luke, why don't you provide the, uh, brief, uh, overview of map M? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, there is a one site in the Monovista North neighborhood made up of four properties, uh, site seven A, site seven B is a tier two property. Um, site seven A, if you remember the presentation from last night where we briefly went over survey results, this was one of the properties that got the highest level of response and I believe a lot of it was fairly negative in terms of the density.
Luke, sorry, you're, you're freezing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it better now?
Uh, there was just a, 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 maybe a five second blip at the beginning and then just now.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
No worries. It's not your fault, obviously.
Um, okay, I'll just, in case you missed anything, that site seven A is the one tier one site here consists of four properties off of Linda Vista. Um, I believe there's a street Evillage Court in there and, uh, this, this property got a lot of response on the survey that, uh, EMC Planning had recently done. Um, a lot of the comments were that the density was felt to be high at, uh, thirty units per acre, because this is largely a single family setting. Uh, this was a site that the density was, uh, increased by the planning commission from, I believe, twenty to thirty um, and on the July five meeting. So I just wanted to point that out. There are no other sites there. There is owner interest on this as well. I believe the owners are present tonight, so they may want to speak at some point as well to address the density issue. Uh, so with that, that was all I had to, um, say about the Monovista North neighborhood. Happy to turn it back to council.
Thank you, Luke. Let's go to go to Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Moore on questions and comments on that.
Sorry, oh, that was left over.
Oh, okay. So let's start with Councilmember Moore then.
Okay, uh, thank you. I was wondering if we could see the, um, the assessor's map showing, um, the, the various parcels for, uh, seven A. Uh, the, where I'm going with this is I'm, uh, I, I believe there was some, um, interest by the, the owner to have a decrease in the, in the density, but because the properties, um, we've got various, uh, sizes on the four, uh, point seven three acres, point six nine, point two five and point eight seven. Uh, I'm, I'm curious about having a portion of this be at the thirty dwelling units per acre and, and, and the rest being at twenty, um, so that we do have some viable, um, affordable units coming in there. I, I, so I'd like to, to see how, how the site is laid out and then, um, here's some comments from the other councilmembers about that because trying to honor what the, the owners are interested in and, and, uh, along with providing the affordable units. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Uh, any reactions from staff on those comments? All right, so we'll go ahead and, uh, put your time at one ten, about a minute fifty remaining. Um, Pew, you seem to be sharing your screen. Did you want to speak to? And you might be muted.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am happy to do that. Um, the, the sites in question are the ones that are labeled one, two, three and four in here around Evillage Court.
Okay.
Just to, and Linda Vista runs east of it. I'm sorry, the A P N map is kind of at an angle.
I see. Okay, so for orientation on those, uh, seventy sides, great. Um, all right, let's go on to Councilmember Willie, followed by Councilmember Way. Oh, Councilmember Willie, you're muted, I think.
Sorry about that. Maybe we could go back. Well, let's go ahead and leave it with this one. I think what you, what I'd like to, to say, it's a follow on to what Councilman Moore said. You know, I can definitely see, you know, we're, we're here, we're trying to, to get the, the maximum amount of housing that we can. But, you know, maximum amount that could be achieved thirty, but with the owner previously telling us, he wants to keep it at twenty. I think we have to be very respectful. I mean, I, I, I just don't feel comfortable pushing something. Especially when the owner has already come forward and said, you know, I'd like to do twenty units on my, on my property. And we're not listening to what he would like. And so I think we need to adhere to those uh, criteria, those limitations throughout this process. And it might even be that, uh, we might say thirty at a particular site per acre and an owner says forty or fifty. We would then, uh, really look into it and consider the impact on adjacent properties and stuff. I think we have to be thinking and not just, uh, summing totals. And so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. I have you at one forty-five. Um, and so let's go ahead and go to Councilmember Way, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Paul. I actually have a telephone conversation with the owners today. Because I'm very curious why your property was, um, discussed at fifteen, then twenty, and all of a sudden it's thirty. So I asked them if they knew anything about it. They actually don't. So I am very curious why would the, um, planning commission, um, put the, the property at thirty per acre without the owner's consent or even knowledge of it? That's my first question. The second is, I do believe this is in a deep neighborhood with, um, you know, I wouldn't put this kind of a property in any neighborhood at thirty per unit, whether it's on east side, west side, middle side of Cipotino. So I agree with Councilmember Willie and we need to respect the owner's, um, um, wishes on this property. Well, it'd be very strange if we said you have put a minimum of thirty per acre on this property. If they want to do fifteen or twenty, they couldn't do it. So I, I do hope that we are here to, um, listen to the owners and listen to the neighborhood. This is a neighborhood property, whether it's on east side, west side, north side, middle side, north, south side, it, it, it's not a fit, um, um, picture for a thirty, and it's not practically, uh, being able to build with our parking requirement and anything like that. So I, first I would like to know how did it become the thirty per acre? Second, I do think we need to listen to the owner.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Next, we have Vice Mayor Chow. Or, hold on, let me go ahead and take that time, um, and put a pause on it. So Luke, you turn your camera on. Did you want to speak to any of these comments?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. On, um, the density and I, I believe the owner, I, I'm assuming he will speak tonight, but has requested more like a twenty unit per acre, which would allow a townhome project to go in on the site. Um, at the planning commission, I'm not sure if I can fully explain the rationale, but a lot of, a lot of the discussion was about trying to increase density on the west side. And the fact that this is a fairly large site, I, I believe it was viewed as being able to lend itself to that. So that's why I would say that the, the density was increased from twenty to thirty. The issue with that, I think from the owner's perspective, is that thirty units per acre, townhomes become fairly infeasible or difficult to do. You start going above the density for townhomes, which are typically in the mid teens to maybe low twenties per acre. So, um, at twenty per acre, this actually would be, in, in my opinion, a very good townhome site. So, um, that's really all I have to add to, to, uh, Councilmember Way's questions.
Okay, thank you, Luke. And let me go on to Vice Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, so this property, um, I think in the west side, it borders the Deep Cliff Golf Course. And on the north side, it borders looks like, um, country club kind of thing. So it's not single family home, but then there is one single family home, a single family home in the southern side and then road. So we have seen many other sites that yesterday they are zoned as thirty units, fifty units. Some of them are actually right next to single family homes. So, so the, the density, thirty units, it's not way out there, but then I do think we should respect the owners, uh, we do want to respect the owners, um, interest and intent. However, we also wish to incentivize, um, get more units, smaller units, so that they are more moderate, we, because we really need moderate income unit. And this will be such a fantastic site for moderate income. But if you build old townhomes, they are going to be very expensive. However, if let's say the west side of the property, we can zone that for thirty units. And then those units can overlook the golf course. I think that will be really great units to have and so many, um, middle income people can live there. So I really wish the owner could rethink their plan and potentially um, build, uh, more units on this fantastic site. So I wonder if we can ask the, the owner to speak now, or do I have to wait until the public comment?
Uh, we're quite close to public comment, actually, Vice Mayor Chow, so.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, Vice Mayor, you, uh, we're at two minutes, um, doing a time check here. I'll go ahead and see it over my time in its entirety. Councilmember Moore, you've got about a minute fifty. Councilmember Willie, minute fifteen, um, Councilmember Way, about a minute, um, then a few minutes for, for my own uh, time to be distributed. And so Councilmember Moore and then Councilmember Way.
Okay, uh, thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with the Vice Mayor and I, and I think that the, having moderate income housing at this location would be really beneficial. Feature housing, um, in particular, would be, would be wonderful. Uh, when I look at the arrangement of the parcels, I'm inclined to retain the, uh, the thirty dwelling units per acre at, uh, the, uh, what is parcel one, um, and the, that's three, five, six, oh, six, zero, zero, one for the map book and page. Um, and retain that at thirty dwelling units per acre. And as the Vice Mayor noted, it's overlooking the golf course and the tennis courts. Uh, so it is not adjacent to, uh, the, the single family residential. And they can do some stepping down and then if, if the owner only wants the twenty dwelling units for the rest, uh, then, then that can be maintained and it'll step down in some manner to the, uh, the homes to the, um, to the south, uh, looking at the, 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 uh, imagery, though, those are, those look like they're rather large, single family homes, um, to the south. Um, but anyway, I, I do, I do agree with the Vice Mayor that that parcel one at least, uh, should, uh, um, be at about thirty or even more, thirty dwelling units per acre. Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Moore, and, um, that, uh, gets you at three minutes. So we'll go on to Councilmember Way, followed by Councilmember Willie.
I am so happy to hear both my council. I am so happy to hear both my council fellow members mention about uh moderate income housing, teachers' housing. And just one correction, it does not border um the golf course. It is bordering the Cupertino uh Swimming Racquet Club where my kids grew up there. And um, so that is a perfect place for a little bit more density. I did talk to the owner this afternoon. Uh Supervisor Joe Smithen is very interested in uh building teacher housing in our neighborhood. I actually took him around a couple months ago and toured this property. And we have a specialist uh from teacher housing with us, Heathering. And they're very interested in talking with the owners and I have teacher housing uh for all five or six high school district or elementary school district in Cupertino. Um, San Vial, Saratoga, or um or Forte D'Anza, um, teacher housing in this site. So it is a great proposal. Uh, and um, so I do believe it doesn't border the golf course, but it does border the um, the north side, border the swimming racket club, which is a perfect place for a little more density. So I do agree with my colleagues. We can do a little bit more density on the north side of the property, but the rest is all surrounded by single family homes. So I do want to listen to the owner, because I did propose to them that the possibilities of um working with the county on uh teacher housing programs. So let's um, you know, when we have time, we will listen to the owners, uh Roy and uh.
Okay, that's a little bit over time, so um, well, to give you time to wind down there. Okay, so let's uh, let's go on to Councilmember Willie and then Councilmember Moore. Um, your hand raised, but Vice Mirchow, let's go uh to uh, the Vice Mayor after uh Councilmember Willie. And uh, I'll give over, say, a minute of my time there. Um, so Councilmember Willie, you have about a minute fifteen left?
Yeah, so you know, I want to be sure, I I feel that we're keeping, you know, this balance. Um, it sounds good, smaller units, more affordable, teacher housing. But, 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 the existing owner that owns the property, that lives there, that is gonna be the neighbor of these developments. I I truly believe he has a right to decide what he's comfortable with. The the increase is gonna mean more cars coming and going, visitors, guests, everything else. He may have children or grandchildren that are riding their bicycles. I think it's great to have a conversation and explain that Joseph Midian has uh interest in teacher housing and things like that. But I am really fixed on what we submit to HCD needs to reflect the final word from the residents of the uh uh community. And they may come back later on and say, you know what, we've rethought this and we want to add it. But I think it's wrong to say, this is the way it's gonna be, even though you don't like it. It it's just wrong. So I want to keep that balance. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Councilmember uh Willie. So um, we have Vice Mayor Chow, and Vice Mayor Chow, as I stated, I'll I'll seat over a minute of my time.
Hmm, so. I will just share, I just want to clarify. I think these are the, this is from the city property information site. Um, so here are the foresight. They are next to the golf course in the west. So I think I hmm, what was mentioned earlier might be inaccurate. It's right next to the golf course. In the north, it's a very large property of maybe a country club. I don't know what's that there. We see that. So on the south side, it's next to single family homes. And like many other sites that were zoned the thirty units per acre, also next to single family homes. And yeah, there may be more traffic to this area, but this is an area that has really good resources too. So I think the HCD really wants us to put units in high resource area. And that's yeah, this really meets the requirement.
Okay, uh, well, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. I don't see uh further hands raised at this time. So so let's go to our members of the public. I think some really good points were made on uh, these several maps. And so um, well, I'll go ahead and provide the instruction for the members of the public in terms of how we uh conduct the public commentary. So uh, we just got done looking at maps K, L, and M. And so we'll be reopening um another round of public comment. Uh, you're not limited necessarily to those maps, but um, I I would suggest it probably makes sense to um, you know, focus upon those uh if we're um, you know, just, you know, fresh in our minds. And so if you have your hand raised in Zoom, by the time the first person is done speaking, and I don't actually have a shot on Community Hall here, so I'm assuming that um, even though this is a hybrid meeting, we don't have uh members of the public in Community Hall. Um.
That's correct.
As long as you have your, oh, sorry, go ahead, uh, Madam City Clerk.
I was just confirming, you're correct. There are no um, no people requesting to speak at that Community Hall.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so as long as you have your hand raised uh in Zoom, by the time the uh first person is done speaking, and that is Jennifer right now, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Tessa Parish, then we'll call on you. And now I have Vijay Kazi, Jean Bedord, and Beris uh Evlich. Um, and then the other way to have your uh comments put into the record is to uh email your comments to the city clerk. That's cityclerkone word at Cupertino dot org. And uh, the first three minutes of uh those comments would be read into the record if you emailed during the time of the first person speaking. And so Jennifer, welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. You know, I'm just gonna make a comment start out here. I think we're gonna need another night of this. Um, the, I fell asleep last night about ten thirty or eleven, and I woke up and the Zoom was gone. Okay, you know, it'd been seven hours. And um, I think for, I feel like tonight, there's been a whole bunch of new properties introduced. But I mean, I sat through both nights of the planning commission. We worked this lot by lot. And yes, the public, the public needs more input. This is our city and our life. Um, I I'm also a bit concerned that we don't want to start messing around with historic properties. That Dorothy Ann is Seven Springs Ranch. My brother worked there at D'Anza as a gardener for quite a while on that property before it was subdivided. That is a very, you know, and that's fine, maybe they have some land. But right now, the housing element in Nevada City, in the gold country, is trying to destroy the history of that city. I spent a lot of time in my childhood up there. My family has a long history in that area. And I don't appreciate groups like Yimby making comments that historic properties, if it's ju- if it's Muir Woods, if it's John Muir, whatever, in San Francisco, that they have no right. If you go to areas in Virginia and you start doing housing elements in there, you are destroying properties from the Revolutionary War. That cannot be tolerated, and it should not be tolerated in California. This group would get in there and start to go into San San Juan Batista. And they would level buildings from eighteen forty that the Donner Party lived in after they were brought in out of the Ceres. That is our history. No group in California has the right to destroy California history, be it bad or good. That is how you learn from history. So I have a quarrel to pick with some of this Yimby loudmouth group that are saying that areas of my state are not worth saving. That's a bunch of whatever. Um, I'm gonna talk right now about the Outback site. I didn't remember that coming up. I think that's a better site for supportive housing in the back end of the Valco site um, where you don't have any access in there. Valco basically right now is a big dump. You know, it's, it's, there's nothing there, there's no buses. So how can you even build a supportive housing site in that back property? Because the rest of Valco, God knows when it's gonna be built. Okay, it's a pipeline, whatever. Um, you can't, that site at the back of it, the Simmons, okay, cannot be built until the rest of Valco is built.
Fifteen seconds.
Honestly, looking at twenty years. I I say right now, twenty years. But but that's holding up that site. Let's move the supportive housing to uh Outback uh restaurant area and and put the housing back in the.
Thank you, Jennifer. And our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Um, before Lisa uh speaks, we have uh two more people that have raised their hands in Zoom. Gori Chala and Scott Connolly, Madam City Clerk. Were there any emails that arrived uh in your city clerk inbox during the time the first speaker was speaking?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And so Lisa, you'll have uh three minutes. Welcome.
Um, thank you. So I wanna, I'm, I'm very concerned about the comments about the EIR and the pipeline projects as a whole, as I came up in these three maps, or the first map, I think. So I want someone to please clarify for everyone, existing condition versus approved but not built. Is it, as I have been moving through this development world, EIRs, you have to consider any project that has been approved but not built, as it's been approved, not when it was approved of six, eight years ago. So I just need clarification because it's insanity to think that we are dealing with existing when there's nothing existing. So please, staff, explain. Andy used the word, I believe Andy used the word existing conditions, but I believe, and Chris, I hope I'm right, approved but not built. Okay, now, let's see. Cleo, um, Vice Mayor Chow asked some questions about Cleo, and I actually sent her an email with some pictures of that area. The site on Cleo that has no address is a vacant site, and it's directly across from where and a similarly sized site where Habitat for Humanity built, I I can't remember, it was four to eight units. And so to me, it's perfect. Um, but you can look at those pictures and you can ask more questions if you'd like. Um, the list of Linda Vista properties, first off, I am not under the impression that either of the brothers that have spoken about these properties lives there. They may have grown up there, but I don't believe either of them live there, which was a concern for one of the council members. I, and I was also gonna clarify, thank you, Vice Mayor, that yes, those existing home sites um, do face, they're they're actually at the Linda Vista Trail, which is right next to the golf course. Um, and that it's the, actually, the Cupertino Swimming Tennis Club that's to the north. So I, I, you know, I hadn't thought of it, but I think it sounds great, the idea of having a mix of density, given that there's four parcels. Um, whichever way that works out best. And I I've said before, I don't know if it was publicly, I think it might have been, that, you know, these family members that own this property have been at every meeting that I'm aware of. They've, they gave interest notice right away and then were dismayed when they were never even told whether they were on the site, and if they were, what? You know, they've been paying attention. So I think, well, not just for that reason, but you know, I I I think having a discussion with them about some other options than they've already talked about developers with would be great. And if the county
Sixty seconds.
Maybe that's great. Um, and then I guess that's all I've got for now. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Our next speaker is Tessa Parish. Welcome, Tessa.
Hi there, good evening. And um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, tonight, I'm calling just to comment on the twenty versus thirty uh units. Because um, as a housing commissioner, I was in the meeting. But I also wanted to make a comment as my, um, just speaking for myself. So what we discussed, or what I, what my point of view was as a commissioner when we voted on that was just looking at it from what the city needs and what would be really wonderful to increase the uh number of families coming into the area because of the numbers of students downtrending in the schools. We were trying to do that, but I, at the core of my being, I strongly believe that we have to respect the owner. And so as as speaking for myself, I wanted to suggest the following. Um, because I am concerned that HCD is gonna look at this and say, you know, there should be more. Say twenty per seller requests for the comment with an option to increase and uh strong um incentives, with strong incentives. And really try to incentivize uh this property for increase, bringing in families uh go to our schools and that and whatnot. So just wanted to comment, just two perspectives. One, what's good for the city, and one respecting the owner of the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. Our next speaker is Vijay Kazi. Welcome, Vijay.
Um, good evening, Mayor Paul, council and staff. Uh, thanks for taking my comments on this topic of housing sites. I wanted to reiterate my comments on my property that falls under the Bub Road area map ID thirteen order in. I know we didn't cover it yet, but I thought it was relevant to the conversation. I'm following up on my comments in the previous council meeting on the sixteenth of August. I own the vacant land at uh two, one, six, seven, zero, Lomita Avenue, APN three, five, seven, one, eight, zero, zero, five. It's a corner lot, at the corner of Imperial and Lomita. And it is completely vacant, and it completely satisfies all the criteria that Luke was mentioning uh yesterday about site selection, except for the size. Uh, it is uh five thousand eight hundred square feet. But it's a vacant land with no displacement, and uh I have two kids who really want to attend schools of Cupertino, and uh it's on the west side as well. Uh, it fits right well in the neighborhood and it's a corner lot, and it's probably going to be an owner occupied lot if allowed. So I wanted to express my interest to build a single family home here on this land. It is currently uh zoned as ML. But the whole neighborhood is a mix of ML and residential constructions, and it's not like one street is uh ML and the other one is residential. It's right, it's completely mixed. There are multiple properties there, uh residential properties on the ML zoning right in the vicinity. So we really plead our case to allow us to build a home here for a family to move in. If this does not qualify only because of the size limit, I would like to request the council to kindly advise on how to proceed further on building a home on this site. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Vijay. Our next speaker is Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. And I'm commenting tonight on the housing element sites in the Monta Vista area. The first issue is this signing a higher density to the Linda Vista parcels in the resident and property owner is willing to accept. You know, he's willing to build housing, but he wants it to fit the neighborhood. And the Planning Commission just arbitrarily increased the designation from twenty units to thirty units per acre over the objection of the property owner. So what's the incentive for a resident to build housing when the city ignores their property right? The second issue is that even at lower housing levels, neighbors have already expressed concern about increased traffic. They've made their feelings clear. There's negative comment. The dreaded Bub Road crawl is back. This area has to contend with traffic from not just one school, not just two schools, not just three schools, but four school. The closure of Regnar Elementary is contributing to this traffic congestion. The area gets gridlocked at current levels of housing. What would happen if a thousand more units of housing were added at Bub Road? In addition, there's a major Apple campus on Resolve's Way with one entrance in and out. For years, the city has tried to mitigate traffic at Bub and McClellan. That just isn't a solution. The third issue is that the Bub Road area is the only area in the city zoned light industrial, which allows light manufacturing in the city. Tech has a, Cupertino has a high-tech image, but it's far too dependent on Apple. I moved here when Lockheed and Hewlett Packard were a major presence. I lived through tandem. What happens when Apple declined? The city needs to nurture new manufacturing companies, not just retail hospitality and the plethora of tutoring and special schools. Direct is the last biotech company in that. Direct is the last biotech company in that area. There used to be more. Years ago, a major developer proposed housing in the Bub Road area. The community emphatically turned the project down, citing the need to provide space to develop new companies, not hindered by the limitations of housing. Land has multiple dimensions, not just housing. Please consider these factors in finalizing the draft of the housing element. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is, I believe it's pronounced Barry now that I think about, but Barry Evlich, welcome. Hello, welcome. We can hear you.
It's Barris.
Oh, Barris, okay, I got it right.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and the City Manager Wu and the staff for the opportunity to speak to you again about our property on Linda Vista. And I will respond to the questions that have been brought up during your discussions, and thank you for those questions. I will be brief as quickly as possible. And I want to summarize a few things and importantly state again that we want to be part of this important process and provide needed housing in Cupertino, but only in a normal, rational, rational way and feasible for our property and the neighborhood. We've been actively involved, as you have said, and some of the other callers have said, in this process since the city contacted us and invited us to participate. It's an important project, and the housing element is very important. We have provided comments during online meetings, submitted a number of emails about dwelling units per acre and the use of our property in an effort to help meet Cupertino's housing needs. Unlike many of the sites discussed last night, we've been in, have not expressed any interest. We've had interest from the very beginning. We also shared information learned from developers, which is very important about our site. We are not developers, and we've mentioned that before. And we've shared that with you, which included that 20 dwelling units per acre as a density is neither feasible or practical for our property as the way we looked at it. And our neighborhood, our recommendations to the city throughout the process and best use of our property is for townhouses and at a minimum 20 dwelling units per acre. While not 100% affordable, townhouses are affordable by design and more affordable than single-family homes. Townhomes in the north Monta Vista area will likely attract younger families to the city and utilize nearby schools and services. We learned last night during the discussions that a minimum 30 dwelling unit per acre density requires 45 feet of height, which is simply too high for our neighborhood and not practical, in our opinion, and based on the information that we've gathered thus far. Our email concerning tonight's meeting addressed several things that we felt we wanted to bring up with you. First, our concern that the attachment aid to your agenda could be interpreted to mean that we were in favor of the 30 unit minimum for our property when we were not. Also, a correction to attachment seedier agenda, summary of site inventory changes, and this topic has been brought up. The density for our property has been changed from 15 to 20 and now 30 units per acre without really any substantive discussions or feasibility by the city that we know or with us. Your summary does not include the 15 dwelling units acre density for our property or explain when or why it changed. Our email for this very important council meeting also refers to an action previously taken and precedent by the council. That action reduced and proposed the proposed minimum density for a housing element site from 30 to 20 units per acre. We feel our property deserves a similar consideration and outcome tonight. We simply cannot support that our property be recommended on the inventory side at 20 dwelling units per acre. And believe.
Thank you. Thank you, Barris. We may well go back to you after our public comment since you're a directly affected property owner of one of the proposed sites. But let me go on to our remaining hands raised for the public comment. They are from Gori Chala as well as Scott Connolly. Gori, welcome.
Good evening. I was here yesterday as well. I talked a bit about pipeline projects, and I know somebody else brought it up earlier tonight, so I just want to kind of second that and hope the council continues to consider that. I would also like to bring up teacher housing. I know that was briefly discussed. I think teacher housing would be very beneficial to our community. There are teacher shortages, not only in Cupertino, but nationally. And if we encourage teachers to come and live in our cities, it will enrich our education and our youth. And, you know, in that way, it will enrich our future. If there's like, I'm not sure about this, but if there's like any policy that can encourage the building of teaching, teacher housing, or kind of set aside parts of the element, housing element plan for teacher housing, I think that would be very conducive to a good environment for the city. I also want to bring up kind of creating properties that are near things that people need, like libraries, schools, workplaces, and also places of comfort, like shopping centers, places to go, like have a coffee, like have food, stuff like that. Like not building housing in secluded areas, having housing where people would actually live in beneficial areas for them and access the resources that they need. I want to point out the importance of making sure that when you're looking at these housing sites, you're considering what is around them, what are the road conditions around them? Are there bus routes? Are there places to walk and bike safely? I'm just taking a look at that so that you can ensure that everyone is, has a home, but also has a home with resources around them. Thank you.
Thank you, Gori. Next, we have Scott Connolly. Welcome, Scott.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor Paul, council members. I think you're all doing a great job tonight here. Just a couple of random thoughts. I hadn't actually planned to speak tonight, but the Linda Vista conversation is really interesting. I think with respect to this property, you know, I can understand all the great reasons for wanting to incorporate a portion of the site at 30 units an acre. You know, I, I would say, if you, I, I looked at it on Google Earth while I was waiting to speak, and you know, the site is a half mile into the neighborhood from Bub Road. I mean, it's a really long distance to have any type of structure built there that might be 45 feet tall. Feels like it would be onerous to the neighborhood, even if it was backed up off the street. I think a lot of the public comments from the survey on this Linda Vista site had to do with exactly that. You know, some height concerns, but a lot of concerns about too much density. I think the discussion on this site at the council level this evening has been really focused on density per acre, which is one metric, but it's a lot larger than that, you know. And I think it would be interesting to see what someone like David Maston, the consultant architect, might think about how this site, it's a relatively small site in a pretty well-established neighborhood, could actually be blended with density of 20 and 30 units an acre. So that you'd actually be able to park it. I think parking the 30 units an acre piece would be, would be really challenging. I think Councilmember Wiley has a really good approach here in terms of understanding, you know, what is important to a willing and ready property owner. Lastly, Vice Mayor Chow, you brought up a really good point. You know, you had mentioned that this would be a great site for 30 units an acre because it's in a high resource area. I would just remind you that the entire city of Cupertino is in the same highest resource area. And so this site at Linda Vista is no different than any other site in the city relative to the resource area map and the TCAC map. It's all the same. So I look forward to continued discussions and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Scott. And I will bring this back to our city council at this time for a relatively brief round of commentary. I do notice that the two property owners in the Linda Vista site, they did have, both have their hands up a moment ago. And so I, I would like to kind, I would like to hear the rest of Barris's commentary. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute your microphone, Barris, to allow you to, to continue your, your comments. I'm assuming that you can wrap up in a relatively brief amount of time. So please, please finish your comments.
Yes, Mayor, and thank you very much for the opportunity. I had finished my other comments, and I was going to go into this. And first, I wanted to thank Councilmember Wu for the discussion today. We appreciated that opportunity very much. And I want to share what we said and concluded. We believe that 20 units per acre is the appropriate density for the property at this point. It can always be increased at some other time, but not at this time. We have, as I've said numerous times, talked to many developers, and the possibility of going up in the future is certainly there. We are not opposed to that, but our position is 20 units per acre at this point.
Okay. Oh, there. Okay, so there is also a Roy Evlich with his hand raised. I'm assuming that there may be some more information there. So with the leave of my colleagues, I'll go ahead and, and now Roy's hand is down. So go ahead. So, so, so Roy, if you have some follow-on thoughts, I, I guess generally outside of the scope of 20 dwelling units per acre is better for the property from your perspective, please feel free to express those. Let's say within a minute or two, if you can.
Oh, you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Yes, thank you. My name is Roy Evlich. Barris is my brother, as you know. And my brother and I have put a lot of thought into what needs to be done with that property to help the community to do the right things. Right things is 20 units per acre. We can always go higher. It doesn't mean we want to, if there's an area that needs to be changed to 30 for that, but we will only commit to 20 units per acre. And the, the neighborhood has put forth what they thought, and the information that the neighborhood had gave us a negative number. And the, you know, and I appreciate the comments from the city council and the effort that people have put in. But as my brother said, we stand at 20 units per acre.
Okay, got it. Thanks very much. So let me go to our city council members. Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised. And again, we're doing a round of three minutes for comments. So Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. So question for the, the city attorney or staff. So the, the reason why we're going with the 30 dwelling units per acre in general on the sites is because of HCD. Could you please reiterate what the difference means for us if we switch to 20 dwelling units per acre? And then we're going to need to, if, if that's dropped, we're, we're now going to need to account for this, this drop in units somewhere else. So anyway, if you could, if you could start with that and, and remind us why, why the ask is for 30 dwelling units per acre.
Yeah, of course. So if I may, Mayor. 30 dwelling units per acre is presumptively suitable for low and very low income housing, according to HCD guidance. So that doesn't necessarily prevent us from, 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 from being, this property from being suitable for moderate income housing, for example. So that would be a potential use to fulfill one of our, our, our RENA shortfalls as a moderate housing site, if, if, if council chose to lower the density.
Okay. And then the other issue is with the, the densities that we're selecting for these particular sites will be used in the, in the EIR for the, for the housing element. So what, what happens if, if we study a site at a lower amount? And then the owner says, oh, well, I, I, you know, I changed my mind. I really want to go with, with a higher density later. What, what happens there? So, so first, we don't get credit for those in our housing element. We don't get credit for those units if it's dropped down lower. But, and they come back later. How does, how does that work? They're going to have to look for a general plan amendment to try to do that?
Potentially, yeah. So if, 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 if so, so, you know, as I think everybody understands at this point, this, you know, this process will amend our general plan and rezone the sites that are selected for upzoning to accommodate our RENA. So if, if, if after that process happens, a property owner decides that, that they want to develop a site at a higher density, there's potential that they could need a general plan amendment, that there's potential that they could need a zoning order amendment, that there's a potential that they could need a separate sequel process. And so it all just kind of depends on, on the property, the general plan designation, the zoning and the, and the project.
Okay. So essentially, this is the easier way to go through it. And lastly, I want to point out, I live on like less than an eighth of an acre lot. With SB9, you can have, my lot can be split, have four units. So basically, I'm at 32 dwelling units per acre, if I'm understanding that correctly. Is that right? If I'm on an eighth of an acre with SB9, that's 32 dwelling units per acre by right. By right. All right.
Okay, great timing, Councilmember Moore. That's exactly three minutes. Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, thank you for those questions. I think we, we should understand what we, the density we are talking about is the map that will be studied in the EIR and in about an year when we actually do the general plan amendment. It could be lower, and then in case the property change hand, maybe the county purchased the property, they might want to consider 30 units per acre later because it's studied. Then the city or the property owner doesn't need to do another study to request an amendment to the general plan. So it actually gives you flexibility down the line. And then if this property owner feels strongly that they don't want the property to be, to have a minimum density, then I have a question for the attorney. So when we say minimum density, 30 units per acre, if a property owner proposed a plan, that's 20 units per acre. What happens then? Does this, is the city obligated to reject such a proposal? Or we still have the discretion to approve it?
The city, the city is not obligated to reject the proposal. I mean, it could be the potential that the property owner would need a general plan amendment to, to accommodate a density below the, the, the minimum density. And, you know, but the city would be free to do that as long as there were sufficient units in our, you know, our allocate, otherwise, you know, that are allocated in our housing element to cover our RENA. So, you know, so it, so it could come out of our, our budget, for example.
We would still need a general plan amendment to allow them to build at the lower density? It's not at the discretion of the council?
Yeah, so I mean, this is, yeah, so, yeah, I, I mean, I think this is, you know, every project is different, but hypothetically, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I, I have to say that when I look at all this density that's being proposed for every site, I don't like any of them. I look at the ones, especially the ones that where the owner did not even request. We put 30 units per acre here. They are in tier one. Do I like them? I don't like them. They don't make sense. However, we are required by the state to come up with a plan. And, and then we are required to produce this X number of low-income units. What do we do? I think at least let's study more so that we have flexibility. And then we could adjust later when there, if there is really a strong community interest to, to at the lower density.
Yeah, I mean, I'll cede over my time to yours if you want to continue with your comments.
And that's okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So you're at the three-minute mark. Let me go ahead and clarify a question there. So if we set these Linda Vista properties at 20 dwelling units per acre, and then they come in later at 30 dwelling units per acre, then what happens to our credit for, for, for meeting these RENA requirements? Are they, do we, do we get the benefit of the presumption at that point?
So as far as tracking progress towards RENA, that, 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 that's fact based on the actual number of units produced. So, so we would get credit if we're tracking progress towards RENA. So we would get credit if we're tracking progress towards Rena.
But we don't.
We, I mean, but.
Yeah.
They wouldn't count towards our, if they wouldn't count, they wouldn't count towards our inventory for the purpose of the exercise that we're presently undertaking.
Okay, so there's no retroactive kind of mechanism to be able to say, well, you didn't get these, however many units is like seventy units before, but since they're not coming in at thirty dwelling units per acre, we're now going to give you seventy, seventy units for the low income and very low income categories. There's no, there's no mechanism for doing that. Is that what you're saying? If you understand.
Yeah, I, so, yeah, I'm not sure that I understand your question. So I, but I, so, I mean, we get credit for the, for purposes of tracking Rena for annual reporting to HCD. We get credit, you know, we report units that are, you know, actually built building permits that are issued, you know, you know, that sort of thing. But, but yeah, once, once this exercise, if we only zone for twenty dwelling units per acre, we only get credit for that number of units for purposes of getting our housing element certified by HCD, if that makes sense.
Evaluated and certified. Okay, okay, that makes sense. There's no, there's no, you know, kind of after the fact, you know, kind of adjustment to the findings or whatever. Although I suppose the, in any event, I think that it's fairly clear on that one with regard to what the request is and what the impact is with the with the down zoning, I guess, if you will, in the proposal there. So, you know, I find it pretty interesting, the idea of, you know, a little bit closer to the golf course having a higher density. But it does sound like the owner is, you know, reluctant at the very best, but really pretty set on a fairly specific plan. And so, I mean, for my part, tend to, you know, also go with the owner's sentiment because that is a fairly good indicator of what should happen in the future to the site. Okay, let me take a quick look at, sorry, it's got various layers of windows here. Councilmember Moore, your, your hand is back up, but I guess we haven't heard from councilmembers Way and Willie on this one. Perhaps there's no, you know, follow up here. I'm not saying that you have to, you know. But Councilmember Way, you have your hand up now. Did you want to weigh in at this time?
Just very briefly, I said it's not adjacent to the golf course. What I mean is the access is not, in the back it is. As one of the speakers said, this property is deep in the inside of neighborhoods. There is no access to it. It's right in the neighborhood. So it is really in a neighborhood, a property. As I repeated again, I wouldn't put thirty per acre in any neighborhoods, whether it's southwest, northeast of Cupertino. It has no access to the golf course. And yes, it looks to be into the golf course, some back homes. But I wouldn't consider that adjacent to a golf course. That's why I say it's not adjacent to a golf course. So just want to make it clear, we do need to consider the owner's wishes because I think HCD is very clear. The owner needs to say they are going to build this in the next eight years. If the owner says, I don't want to build thirty per acre, I do think we probably need to comply with the owner's wishes. And of course, if something comes up in the future, we can always upzone it for teacher housing if works out with the county. And I do think the owner made it clear, Barry and Roy made it very clear that they would like twenty per acre. And the neighborhood responses are very clear. I think there are over a hundred responses on that property. The satisfactory rate is eighteen percent, if I remember correctly. So I think if we are a council that listen to the residents, we really need to pay attention to the owner and to the residents that live in that neighborhood. This property is deep in a neighborhood. It's not adjacent to a Steven Creek or any major street. Sorry, did somebody just release or something?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm muted. So next we have Councilmember Willie and after Councilmember Willie, Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, maybe city attorney could just comment on the one speaker that asked about teacher housing. And what ability do we have to hold that? I'd go one step further. I think I know the answer to the other question, but I think the community.
Apologies for that. We don't know what happened. I think we all got a message that says, says something to the effect of, you know, this meeting has been ended by the host. I don't think it was me, but I was the co-host. And so if it was me inadvertently, I apologize, but I got the same message. I think everyone else did. In any event, what we're going to do now, we're a couple of hours into the meeting, seven oh four. So we will nonetheless take a five minute break and we will reconvene at seven ten. I think we're wrapping up the council comments at this time. And so when we come back at seven ten, where we're going to be is, I believe it was MAP, MAP N. So that would be the Bub Road special area when we start up again. And I'm just going to see if we can clean up some of those, any residual comments that people had. And I see Councilmember Moore has his hand raised. So seven oh five now on your clocks. We'll come back around seven eleven. And so we'll see you in a few minutes. All right, thanks, folks. We're in the middle of, I believe, some comments from Councilmember Moore following our reach out for public comment. And so before we go on to the Bub Road special area, which is MAP N, Site thirteen, Councilmember Moore, would you care to finish out your comments? And then Councilmember Willie has a hand raised as well. And I believe Councilmember Willie does have some time left. So Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to comment a little bit on some of the things that the vice mayor said. And I agree with kind of having some, taking some issue with what we're doing and that it is difficult. And I think that for me, one of the great frustrations is that because when we're looking at the numbers that are coming out of the Valco project and generating upwards, well, actually probably more than, but at least eighty-three hundred employees, generating a need for five thousand five hundred and thirty-three residential units, providing two thousand four hundred and two. That gives us, leaves us a need of three thousand one hundred and thirty-six. And so essentially, when we're all done this whole process, even for all of the housing that we're putting out there, we're going to be over nine hundred units short. It's, it's, it's an exercise in complete frustration. My question for our attorney is if we have twenty dwelling units per acre and they are townhomes and they are for sale, do they have a required twenty percent? I think it's BMR component if it's for sale. I was wondering if that, if we still would have that requirement for this site. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, so there would be twenty percent of the units would be required to be moderate under our existing BMR program or they would be required to pay the in lieu fee.
Okay, so that's about ten, ten units I'm getting for this particular property in the total. If no part of it is the thirty dwelling units. Okay, thank you.
Well, to kind of flesh out that answer, that's our election, is it not? As to whether they pay the in lieu fee or provide the inclusionary zoning units, right?
No, that's state law requires us to offer the option.
To offer the option? And so they could basically just take the amount per square foot paid and simply provide the in lieu fee instead of inclusionary owner occupied housing units? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what's our mitigation fee for housing units at this point? Per square feet?
I don't have that at the tip of, tip of my fingers right now, but I could certainly share that with council.
Is that only for owner occupied or does that apply to rentals as well?
There's also a fee that applies to rentals.
But with regard to the election of what you provide?
You know, that, that applies to rentals as well.
Okay, and all right, well, I guess I'll follow up that just independently. Yeah, kind of look into it. But let's go to Councilmember Willie. And Councilmember Willie, did you have a follow on at this time before we go on to MAP N?
So I was actually in the middle when, at least I think I was in the middle when we got closed down. So the question is for the city attorney, the one speaker had brought up teacher housing. I think we're all in favor of teacher housing. But the question comes in, you know, if you could truly give the narrative on what limitations or how, what we can and can't impose, but please go one step further. So the BMR, you know, has a requirement. There's moderate, low, very low, and then the category with developmentally disabilities. Existing Cupertino residents versus non-residents. I mean, Deansa college students versus non-Deansa college students. If we set up a dormitory type development somewhere and the intent is Deansa college students, but other people decide, hey, I want to live there. So if you could kind of, you know, give some type of guidance so that we, we all in the residents know what we can and can't do.
So I mean, this is, I think this is only partly a legal question. So, you know, legally, we do have, you know, our inclusionary requirements that the mayor's question just alluded to. As far as, you know, designing and developing properties for different income groups, you know, that usually requires, you know, cooperation with the developer and or property owner and or, you know, the institutions that are being targeted. And then often it's the question of funding, you know, for purposes of, you know, the exercise that we're engaged in now. You know, that, 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 you know.
Maybe I can interrupt. You're not quite on the question that I'm after. And that is, you know, the units are designated, that's taken care of. Now people are knocking on the door to rent them or purchase them. BMR units, they have to, they have to financially qualify. Well, you qualify for below market, qualify for low, qualify for very low. Special category, development disabilities, again, a qualification. Teacher housing, ah, that's a big question mark. Or student housing, big question mark. Just how do we qualify or not qualify? Can we do anything? That's the real question.
So it's possible for individual projects to be developed with a specific population in mind. For something like teacher housing, you know, and the intersection with, you know, low and moderate income housing, you know, there are some educators that would qualify in those categories. But, you know, you know, as they get more senior in their career or, you know, depending on the income of their partner, they might not qualify. So there's not a, not a perfect overlap between the, you know, the below market housing that we're discussing as part of this, this exercise and, and, and teacher housing.
Yeah, but, you know, I'm still trying to get our community, you know, CUSD, FUHSD. And yet somebody in Franklin McKinley School District in San Jose says, wow, I'd love to live in Cupertino. There's a teacher housing. My income is satisfactory. How do, you know, is it possible to allocate it specifically for CUSD, FUHSD?
Yeah, so, so local resident and employee preferences are permissible for affordable housing development. So it just, but it could just, we would just, you know, it would, sort of the restrictions would depend on the funding source. You know, how, you know, how, you know, developers sort of, you know, what they were interested in providing. But legally, we would certainly be able to restrict any affordable development that bona fide local residents or bona fide local employees.
Thank you.
Did I get to the right question?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it'd be nice if it was more, you know, cut and dried, but that's okay. So there is some, some criteria, some ways to limit it, and that's good.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. We're going to go on to the Bub Road special area, which was Site thirteen. And so I'm going to go ahead and take public comment after MAP N. Not, I'm sorry, not MAP N, this is MAP N. MAP O after MAP N is the Homestead Villa neighborhood. So we'll take a public comment after that. And then we have MAP P, which is the Creston Farlap neighborhood. Followed by, I believe, a map, I believe it was twenty-two, that included Outback Steakhouse Shopping Center. And so I didn't realize at the time that the Bub Road special area was, you know, Site thirteen. I guess, you know, I guess I covered it in, you know, the, in the looking at it yesterday, of course, but in my mind, I thought that that was one of the two that we were going to look at later after the sixteen maps we're looking at. But it's one of the sixteen, so let's just go ahead and take MAP N. And then MAP O, take public comment, MAP P, as well as the MAP twenty-two, and then we'll take public comment again. So Luke, did you want to give us a summary of MAP N, please?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just. Just so I, so staff understand. So we'll go ahead and conclude at the end of MAP O and take public comments and come back with MAP P and the new Outback Steakhouse site.
That's right, MAP twenty-two, I think that was.
Thank you.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, yeah, let's get the MAP N summary, please.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I wasn't sure how we wanted to take these. As you said, the, there's the, there's the slide that was part of the overall presentation that shows the one site we have owner interest for. It's a little under half acre, a single family residence. The majority of the surrounding area with the blue outline is the Bub Road site that was talked about last night. And I'm totally comfortable if we want to talk about that site as well at this time or if we want to push that back till after the other neighborhood discussions. As I said, we only have the one tier one site here in the lower right hand corner on McClellan. Currently a single family home, has a projected density of fifty units per acre. This was another site that was essentially, the density was upped through the planning commission meetings, given its location near Deansa College and along McClellan. So that was really the reason for the higher density on this lot. And as I said, if we want to sort of segue into a discussion on the larger Bub Road site, I'm prepared to do that as well. That's really all I have to say about this, and I am happy to kick it back to the city council.
Okay, thanks, Luke. And so I think it makes sense, we're on this map, to go ahead and take some comments from council. And I'm sure that'll, you know, bring out some follow up responses on this map. So would anyone like to start us off here? I see a couple of hands raised. Those are from Councilmember Willie and Vice Mayor Chow. And so we'll go ahead with same practice, three minutes each. And Councilmember Willie, please.
Yeah, I'll just say, yeah, I definitely want to discuss the main office space. But I think we should start with the intent of this, the numbers that we've got. So I'll let the others speak first.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. We'll start with Vice Mayor Chow then. Vice Mayor Chow.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think, at first, I'm trying to be a little more consistent. So we have seen many other maps, especially along Deansa, where there were no owner interest, but then they were recommended for tier one. but then they were recommended for tier one. Do we have some idea how many those tier one sites have had no owner interest? So I can get some background for comparison and.
Uh, you know, I do not have the exact number along South Deansa. We we do have a number of sites on South Deansa that did not have owner interest, um, several that did. Um, but as as you note, not not all of the properties have owner interest on the slide here for Bub Road. We do have an owner interest uh, expressed here.
So, so we, not only South Deansa, I think for many other areas of the city, we did consider quite a few sites, even without owner interest. But then we think they are suitable for housing development. So we are considering them for potential inclusion, especially in the environmental impact study. So they could give us flexibility to consider zoning to add residential, right? So that's the exercise here.
Yes, that's correct, own owner interest is a factor, it's not the sole factor. So you you have other things with locations of the property, what's currently on site. You what what's really determinative with with HCD is does, is the site likely to redevelop? Um, on South Deansa, I believe you have several sites that would fall into that underutilized category for being along a major corridor, and they're very likely to redevelop in the next eight years.
So I think this site, it's about the Route 85. And this is an area I think really needs retail space that's walkable. I think Montavista High School students have no place that they can walk for lunch except the 7-Eleven, which doesn't provide healthy food. This area, I think, really needs some updating to include a retail area and residential units that those units could be for students who actually attend the Deansa College.
32.
So I don't quite know what's existing use on each of these sites. So if it's possible to get some idea about existing uses, I I think some of these sites along 85 are kind of lower density too. So are there potential for development? That would be interesting to know, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and next we have Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so I I'm I'm curious how, um, if we were to designate uh, some of this site, um, in our in our housing element, I'm curious about how we would go about doing that. I think there there's some interest perhaps in having higher density on the 85 side. Should you have housing, um, so I I was kind of wondering, since it looked like we have about 29 acres in the whole special area, um. For me, I I just, just someplace to start would be to consider including perhaps half of it and then have uh, some at 15 dwelling units per acre and some at 30 dwelling units per acre along the 85 as as a, as a starting point or even start with a quarter and then see what, see what those numbers um, yield for um, number of units. And and then I would like to hear what the other council members think about that. Um, I know it, this area's been, uh, it it's been of interest for mixed use development um, with uh, ground floor, commercial and residential above for for some time. So I'd like, I'd like to hear what the other council members have to say about it as well and how how we would go about um, adding it in if staff has some suggestions about how to do that. Um, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And did staff want to respond to uh, Councilmember Moore's comments about inviting some thoughts on how to add in?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I know that Pew has turned on her video as well. Um, I was wondering if it does, if would it help if for council to see the new slide that we prepared since last night's conversation before we uh, continue answering some of these questions?
Uh, oh, sure, wha- is there a new presentation, um, Madam Speaker? This is the slide with regard to the Bub Road Special Area? Okay, great, go ahead. And I'll I'll stop Councilmember Moore's time at two minutes, which is a little while back.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I just wanted to comment again on the Bub Road sites. Um, pretty much all the sites on the west side of Bub Road are owned, uh, not owned, but are occupied by Apple. They have long term leases on these buildings. These are flexible spaces that Apple particularly likes because they have um, particular business groups that actually got the entire place every year, 18 months in order to be able to um, use these facilities. Um, on the west side, uh, again, we do have the Caltrans courtyard, we have uh, Direct, which is their corporate headquarters. It is just one of the very few companies that has their corporate headquarters in here in Cupertino. We also have a church, and the church also has Apple as a tenant in one of the buildings that they all, that they um, um, own. There are, there is one all vacant office building that, um, as I mentioned last night, that started construction. Um, in terms of adding residential density to this particular area, um, I would continue to recommend that, you know, uh, if we do, uh, you know, that it be considered as a tier two option, not necessarily as a tier one option. Um, but that would, um, you know, there are infrastructure improvements that um, Apple has put in on Bub Road, particularly to support pedestrian and bicycle activity to connect their different facilities. They have paid approximately $4.25 million um, for improvements within the Bub right away and along McClellan Road, um, in order to improve connectivity for their employees in this area and to their other facilities. Um, I don't necessarily see them going away from this area. Um, however, with that, you know, I'll I'll hand it back to council for it is their prerogative to determine what they wish to do.
Great, thanks very much, Pew. And so let's go on, I see, I don't see new hands raised at this point. Um, so I see Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore still uh, have their hands raised. Let me go ahead and ask a a brief question on this. If if we were to want to study this, um, but we weren't certain that we would want it definitively in in tier one, um, could we put it in tier two and proceed with Sequo analysis on sites along Bub Road? Is that, is that possible, eh, or is that, I shouldn't ask if that's possible? Are tier two sites contemplated as being part of the Sequo analysis?
At this point, yes, we are intending to study the tier two sites as well to allow us options in the event we get definitive no's or, you know, something happens. HCD says this tier one site absolutely doesn't work. So we have some fallback options for council to pick from.
Right, precisely. And so those fallback options, as I think they're, you know, adequately, and and they're properly couched, um, are probably sites that we would want to select along the way for tier two. So, um, Pew, do you feel ready to go through this map on Bub Road to, you know, essentially tell us what really just wouldn't work? I mean, do you feel prepared to tell us that? I mean, it looks like there are.
Actually, like I said, every.
Structures, right, so.
Everything on the west side is Apple um, occupied right now.
Is Apple occupied, and you were talking about the leases. Um, I know that they have particular concerns about results way. And so could can you, for the benefit of um, council and public, indicate results way on that map here?
Results way is this triangular piece just to the west of.
Okay, so that's results way. So everything else, you know, is is Bub Road, um, it, is any of it owned by Apple or is it just on this?
Results way is owned by Apple, um, the other properties, like I said, are.
Purple stuff, is any of the purple stuff owned by?
They're mostly all leased.
Mostly all leased, okay, okay, um. And I know that, you know, um, there may be more sensitivity with regard to the the triangular part, but that's not really under consideration along Bub Road, right? So, um, and then how about the eastern side of Bub Road? You, uh, what are, I know we talked a little bit about it yesterday, but are there particular sites that we need to be especially careful about in terms of, you know, we don't essentially want to waste time, right, to uh, put it through a Sequo review?
Um, I wouldn't, um, I would not suggest necessarily studying the Caltrans side, the direct, two direct sites. Those are manufacturing sites, these are industrial areas, um, and have been for a very long time. Um, the, um, everything south of the two properties where my cursor is, these two are the direct buildings. Everything south of that, barring the uh, building with the cross, is also occupied by Apple.
Um, what about the properties that are north of the Caltrans site?
So the north of the Caltrans side, uh, there is a building, which is the building that we were discussing uh, yesterday, which is, that had a proposal with the city to remodel, that is also an industrial building. They, all these buildings have, I believe, um, uh, loading docks at the rear. These these two have loading docks, I believe, at the rear of the property. So these have functioned as warehouses or or um, industrial properties in the past. Um, this particular site where my cursor is right now was where there used to be an urgent care center, a walk-in urgent care center, uh, for the longest time. I'm actually not sure if that still is there or not.
I think it was US Health Works, at least.
Correct.
Um, okay, so it does sound like, it does sound like, with the exception of what you're saying with the Caltrans um, Corporation Yard and and the direct um, facilities, basically that, I I I guess a little bit of a rectangle uh, below the top on the east side. Um, these could at least be subject to a tier two uh, type of study. So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, are you suggesting these three at the top northeast?
Um, yes, well, I'm I'm suggesting everything other than what you were indicating for the Caltrans Trans Corporation Yard and those two, um, you know, I am not 100% sure why why the direct sites would not necessarily be potentially subject to to study. But, um, I I I know you're saying that they're they're light industrial, but I mean, that's that's kind of applicable to the rest of it as well. So I mean, um, in any event, you know, studying it, I don't think is um, something that would really cause any harm. And it does give us some potential fallbacks in case other things fall through. But uh, let me go to Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Will. Actually, Councilmember Willie, have your hand raised, and I don't think that you've spoken on this yet. So why don't we go to you before we head back to Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, I was kind of thinking, you know, I think it will help with everybody's discussion. So I think I'd like to share my screen. Okay, is my screen up?
It is, yes, um, we're looking at all of your windows, though, I think, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. So at any rate, you know, here's the Bub area, here is uh, Highway 85 and 280. This is our transit hub, if there's ever gonna be one. I want to deviate here for a second and say, compare this to this. I used to work on McCandless at the corner of Montague and McCandless. This was all office building, and when the Great Mall opened, we all walked over and went into the Great Mall. The, the composition of those office buildings here, I believe this is the building I actually worked in from 1990 to 2000. All the buildings on McCandless were single story office buildings, all of them. This is McCandless today. All those office buildings have now been removed and uh, housing has been put in. Okay, let's go back to Bub Road. Here's the office building pictures for Bub Road. This would be, in my view, the opportune time. If you, if we don't do something at this juncture and building owners decide to double the size, uh, Apple would like to double the size of their buildings over on Valco Parkway. At that point, you won't get them to tear them down. But the old, single story buildings could, in fact, usher in a development like this. Together, those sites, per Scott and the information that he sent last night, 27.08 acres. If today it were, let's say, 40, uh, FAR of 45, even though commercial and office don't have FARs, that would be 530,000 square feet at 200 uh, square feet per person. That would be about 2,600 people that could work there if they were all fully loaded. If they double the height and make them all two story, you're looking at 5,300 workers. So one of the residents said, well, Bub Road's real uh, crowded, we we can't do anything there. Yeah, let's talk about the roads around Wolf and what is happening with uh, the rise. 2,400 housing unit, 2 million square feet of office. All of Cupertino is going to be impacted, and the Sequo needs to determine how best to mitigate. But if we miss this this opportunity, I think it's going to be very sad that HCD is going to continue to push on Cupertino and we're going to be scraping the barrel again and again and again. This is an opportunity for a lot of housing of different compositions. Teacher housing, townhouses, row houses, apartments, along that full stretch. It it just says, this is a residential area. We remove essentially 50,000, 500,000 square feet of commercial and office, and now it's over as part of the 2 million square feet of office at Valco. So our jobs to housing balance at least improves, improves. So I'm gonna leave it at that, but I'm seriously wanting to look at this. I want to be a part of, if if city staff can't get interest from the building owners, I think the city council should be meeting with the building owners and talking about a vision, a vision for this area. And so with that, I'll let you take control back, Mayor, and it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilmember Willie, that's your time as well, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, let me take a look here. Um, well, you you appear to have exhausted your time, and then, um, I guess I'll I'll go to Councilmember Wei. Uh, can we split your three minutes, Tom, is that okay? All right, thank you. Um, so Vice Mayor Chow, uh, and then Councilmember Moore has about a minute left. So, um, Vice Mayor Chow, why don't we, why why don't we go with your follow up thoughts at this point?
Hey, thank you so much. So this is the, again, the city's property information site. I'm looking at what's the current zoning. I find out that all these public sites, they are zoned, industrial, residential and commercial. Most of these are zoned already residential, uh, except this part. I'm guessing this one is a Caltrans site, that's public facility. But the next one, then, it's again residential, commercial, industrial. And then also across on the east of Bub, also it's residential, it's already one of the land use. And I'm also curious how come the map does not include these three sites that has Bub Roads accessible? These three add together to about 20 acres. So that's in addition to the rectangular area on the right. And these three, uh, like this one in the middle is industrial residential, and then in the bottom is industrial residential. So my question is, if one of these site today propose a project with housing, my understanding is the current state law says we, if the zoning is inconsistent with the general plan, land use, the land use, the general plan goes. So what does that mean here? Does that mean someone can actually propose a residential project today with the current zoning? But then what would be their units per acre? On that this one, one of them has 10 to 20 units per acre, but most the other sites don't have that density specified. So I'm curious, what exactly is the current density?
I I can answer that, uh, the current density is 20 dwelling units to the acre. Um, and they're, uh, in the um, old days of development allocation, I believe there were 94 units allocated somewhere within the Bub Road area that could be developed at 20 dwelling units per acre. However, with the state law changes, they could develop 20 times the acreage within the. However, with the state law changes, uh, they could develop twenty times the acreage within the Bub Road area um, for the site. So um, that, that is the um, the impact of the state law.
Every site is uh, by default twenty units per acre if they propose a project today. They can develop. Then it sounds like we should study it then. Because.
And there is another factor, yes, there is another piece to it, which is the likelihood of development. So we do have to convince HCD that this, these sites will develop within the next eight years. And as your staff at this point were saying that there doesn't appear to be that likelihood, given the investments that Apple has made within the buildings and the right of way. However, if the council does want this area to be studied at twenty dwelling units to the acre, I would recommend that they be studied at the tier-two level.
Yeah, I think many companies are reducing their office footprint because a lot of employees are requesting to come in remotely or have hybrid days. So I think Apple likely will be adjusting too. So how how likely they will hold on to these buildings, no one knows. We should, how I don't quite understand why are we making that a huge factor, it seems in our housing element. Have we gotten any letter from Apple indicating that they they will remain in these buildings?
Uh, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, um, thank you. So I, I, I'm still curious about taking a portion of this, this uh, area and be it a quarter of it, um, or a half of it, and uh, and putting some density on there. Um, so looking, looking at it potentially a quarter at thirty dwelling units per acre, something like that. Um, but uh, if, if anyone has the uh, I'll call it the satellite view of the Caltrans, um, yeah, it's Caltrans, uh, the Cupertino Maintenance Station Yard, because I've been looking at that on, on my phone, and um, I gotta say, it looks like a lot of wasted parking lot space. Um, and uh, so that, that's really frustrating, and that's really underutilized. Um, and then going a little bit to the, to the west, there's actually a, a really large parking area, not on Bub Road, but I believe it's an Apple um, building just to the west of the, the railroad tracks, um, which has a massive parking lot. So that also seems like it's some really underutilized space. Um, so with regards to that Caltrans site, I, I sure wish that we could somehow acquire um, some of that into the city, or you have you know, reach out and have some negotiation and discussion about that. Um, it, it's not a particularly attractive addition to, uh, to that, to that area, um, the buildings, uh, the, the, it looks like HVAC is all over the roof. Um, you've got these massive, uh, looks like ventilation pipes uh, on, on top. Um, and the rest of it, you've, you've got uh, vehicles parked all over. It's just a parking lot, um, essentially. So I don't know if, if Councilmember Willie, perhaps when you shared your screen, if you could point that out, and I, you might have the satellite layer available um, to show it, and you're nodding. So I think you've, I think you've looked at that site too. So I'll, I'm gonna um, mute myself and have some more discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. All right, um, Councilmember Willie, let's uh, let's uh, wrap on this. Did you have any follow-on comments? I mean, essentially.
Yeah, yeah, the, the follow-on comment is if we don't plant the seed now, there is one building that's totally vacant. I think we can make some progress with Caltrans. We got Lawrence Smithy Park. If we don't plant the seed now, and different building owners start doubling the size of their building, the ship will have sailed. But by uh, bringing it under the umbrella, and maybe that one vacant site next to the Caltrans site, talk to the owner, and if he says he's, he's game for doing something like this, that site in itself gets rezoned, and it sends a message to all the building owners. Wow, this is what you can achieve. But if we don't do anything, they're each gonna go off on their own, and everything's gonna grow eventually. So I want to say that we need, I truly believe we need to, to move on this at this time so that we have the future to work with. Thank you.
Um, Ma- Mayor Paul, if I had any time left, I, there was a, a statement that I, about SEQA that needs to um, have some more information for the council.
Please proceed, go ahead.
Okay, there was a, there was a statement uh, roughly to the effect that SEQA would mitigate, and it, and it seemed as though the impression was that uh, when we do our EIR, that there would be mitigations for um, the Valco project. And I'd like the attorney to um, if, if he's still available to um, uh, answer that uh, that, I guess, question about that is, will our EIR for um, for the housing element include mitigations for um, for the Valco project? And will it be referencing some kind of um, because it's a pipeline project, it should have, like, like the other pipeline projects should have their SEQA documents referenced. Um, I would assume, if you footnoted when they're, when they're mentioned, um, it will, what, what will be footnoted for um, the mitigations for, for Valco? Thank you.
So, uh, so I mean, just to be clear, that the, the project, that the SEQA project that we will be studying uh, as part of this EIR is the general plan amendment and rezoning. So, so things that are not part of that, and so that would include, you know, the, the Valco project, it would include projects that have already been entitled and are rezoned. They would not be studied as part of, of this EIR. Um, they may or may not be part of the back, the, the, the background uh, for the EIR. That's, that's a pretty complicated question, actually. But they're definitely not part of the project.
Um, it, so I was understanding earlier that, that, that Valco would be considered our baseline, even though it's a um, mo- mostly vacant property with no traffic whatsoever, that the baseline would be the pipeline project as if it were fully built. So it would be, we would be pretending that the whole thing was built with all those towers and all of that traffic, and that would be our baseline. So I, I'd like to, to really understand that. Um, I think, I think it does open um, that EIR up to a, to a lawsuit, a huge one, personally. Um, and right? Because it's like, you're, 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 it's like make-believe baseline, um, rather than the baseline when the EIR started. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, right.
Okay, Councilmember Way.
Um, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I've been listening, and I, I, I do believe that we are, um, you know, we have many discussions, and I think we're open up to public comments. But I do want to caution, um, from what I understand. The HCD is looking at owner, yes, it doesn't need owner approval, but the possibilities of owner will develop it in the next uh, eight years. And if I listen correctly with staff's comment on the Bub Road, there are long-term leases, um, the owners has been contacted, there's no interest at all. So to include that, um, I think it is, um, we're probably likely to see HCD's comment saying that it's not uh, eligible because the owner has no interest, but that's just my personal feel. So I do think uh, we need to look more into what our desires are and what realistically can be accomplished in our housing elements. I'm not saying that that's not included. I'm saying that uh, maybe the staff recommendation to do a tier-two will be a good one, but it would be very, um, uh, I, I, according to what I hear so far, i- it's gonna be pretty difficult for us to convince HCD with properties with long-term lease that could be developed in the next eight years. That's just my comment. And I do want to reiterate on the Linda Vista site that the owner's wish is twenty units per acre. If we force it to be thirty acres, the owner can really say, I don't want to develop that way. So we might want to uh, look into that too. Just um, my um, personal observations. Thank you.
Okay, um, let, let me refer this to the city manager. Madam City Manager, you have a running list of items that you're planning on um, having us go through, correct, in terms of seeing, uh, if we can get uh, majority support for them so that you have a omnibus motion. From what I understand, that uh, we're looking to set forward and propose after we've gone over all the maps. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. So we're hoping to come back to you with the itemized recommendation that has been proposed by either individual council member or a collection of many council members for you to act to either include in the, in the list or not. Uh, for this particular site, staff's recommendation is to include it, but to put it on tier-two.
Yeah, and, and so do you have clarity as to what particular parcels we're talking about here? Because uh, there seems to be quite a few, you know, potential properties where, you know, I mean.
That is a great question. So based on what I heard last night, uh, was what was being shown in the map that we had on the screen earlier. Um, I, I think based on the recent conversation, the area has expanded um, a bit. So Chris, go ahead and um, chime in.
Yeah, so I just, I was trying to, to, to track the parcels that people were talking about. So, and I believe the mayor, you referred to uh, one zero zero forty, one zero zero eighty, and one zero zero one hundred Bub. Um, I believe those are three parcels that you were talking about. Um, Councilmember Willie, I believe, referred to one um, zero one hundred Bub. Um, there were some other more, you know, general comments we would, we would include, but those are the specific properties that I was able to capture. Obviously, you know, if council has other properties, they would like to consider, um, you know, that have the opportunity to do that now, or either when, you know, they consider a motion to uh, approve uh, the inventory.
Mr. Mayor, would it help to have a planning staff to pull up that map again, and then so we're all on the same page? The staff can kind of circle around the partial stuff that's been contemplated?
I mean, I would suggest that you track with the uh, parcel addresses that, that the city attorney just recited. I think that sounds, you know, workable. Um, but uh, briefly, let's go back to Councilmember Moore, and then Councilmember Willie, still have your hand raised. But uh, but very briefly, I want to keep us on track here timewise, and so uh, after this, we'll go over to the next map. Councilmember Moore?
I'm sure. Uh, I'd like an opinion about one zero one zero zero Bub Road. Um, it's got long-term um, uh, management uh, uh, on GeoTracker. Uh, and uh, yeah, so I, I'm not, I'm not sure about that one. It's got soil vapor extraction going on um, currently. Let's see, there's a hand up. I mean, yeah, you can, you can put it down, put it down, but we're gonna need.
Sorry, no, I, I, yeah, sorry, yeah, no, I, I set myself up for that. Um, so um, I, I don't think we're prepared to give an opinion on any en- environmental issues there. I mean, certainly something that we would look at if the site were added either to tier-two or tier-one.
Okay, okay. So they, i- it, it could, uh, it's got, you know, TCE, TCA, um, it could have a soil vapor barrier. I mean, there, we have gas stations that end up with residential on them, but they have to make, make mitigations for it. I just wanted to point that out because this particular site was brought up. Okay, thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore, and then Councilmember Willie.
So uh, I'll share my screen just to kind of uh, uh, point out that site with Caltrans. And so here's the Caltrans site. All parking lot, except for this one small building. Let's keep that in mind, that asking Caltrans if we can acquire that piece of property, and they move those vehicles to a different site. I really want to go back to the question that uh, Councilman Way is saying, that somehow HCD is gonna get mad at us. I'm not suggesting we change anything on the rest of the housing element. If we were to focus on one zero one hundred, because it's been vacant for two and a half years, and that owner says, yes, he'd like to be considered, it's point seven acres. If we were to say thirty units per acre, that would add to our buffer. And it could send a, i- if we craft the message to HCD, we hope this will be a residential corridor, and we're starting down that path. We don't want to rezone everything at this point in time. We'll start here and then let it build out, just like San Jose does. So again, thinking that somehow HCD is going to, you know, nix our housing element, I, I don't understand that, that. I haven't said, suggested that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Let's go on to map O. This is the Homestead Villa Neighborhood. And uh, Luke, would you like to give us a summary of this uh, this map O? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor Paul. This is the Homestead Villa Neighborhood, which is next to last. Uh, we have one tier-one site here on uh, Maxine Avenue. I believe this is an existing duplex that uh, butts the freeway. Uh, so right now you have two units on the site. It has a proposed density of twenty, which would yield uh, twelve new units on the property. Uh, this site, uh, like many of the others at our residential properties, also has owner interest submitted. Um, and that is all I had to add on this property. I'm happy to turn it back to council and be available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Luke. Anyone want to comment on map O? Again, that's the Homestead Villa Neighborhood. Vice Mayor Chow.
So again, trying to compare the density with the ones we have seen. This one is only twenty units, not thirty or fifty, even though it's right next to highway. It's only one small si- south side. Is that just a two neighbor? Uh, like a single-family home? The rest is either highway or road. So what's the rationale for only twenty units here?
Um, I can try to answer that.
Request for that.
Yeah, and I don't know if uh, David Massington, who has not uh, participated yet tonight as an architect, he may be able to add something as well. Um, while the site's up against the freeway, it's not directly accessing that, so it is in a residential area. It is kind of a large um, oddly-shaped lot. It already has a, a duplex on there rather than a single-family home. So as part of the, you know, the whole housing element exercise, this round with the arena numbers are much higher. We are trying to add density, um, where single-family neighborhoods typically would have been about ten units or so per acre. We're looking at twenty for this site. It's, it's not along a major corridor like uh, Homestead or Deans or Stevens Creek where the fifty-per-acre sites are. So a twenty seems to be a realistic density for a lot like this at this location.
Yeah, I think you would probably end up with a townhouse development here. I mean, I think that's what would make the most sense, because you could park underneath, keep the, you know, you wouldn't have to be parking a larger number of units. It does narrow towards the north, um, but I think it's feasible.
Okay, great.
So I mean, with, uh, thirty units would not work here. So we have more affordable housing?
So I think thirty gets difficult.
That would be difficult because of the odd shape.
Yes, I think it'd be difficult to park the thirty units per acre. I think the twenty at Townhouse, you can park it in a garage below, and that works, but anything more would be difficult.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, great. Anyone else? This is uh, again, map O, and I don't see any further hands raised. And so let's go on to our members of the public. As uh, indicated, we will be taking public comment on um, on this item. Uh, we just went over maps N and O. Uh, Jennifer, your hand is raised, as is Lisa Warren's. Um, same, same guidelines apply. Uh, please have your hand raised or an email into cityclerk@cupidino.org uh, before we have our first speaker done. And so Jennifer, welcome. You have three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. I was a little bit confused about where we started. Um, I think you said map O or N? No, wait a second. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we were on map N, uh, Jennifer. That was Bub Road, and then Homestead Villa is map O.
Okay, so are those the only two we did? Um, okay, so let me just ask you a question. Um, going back to the Bub Road area, um, you all have been talking about that strip of road, which is currently. strip of road, which is currently part of a tech park, and you've got a Caltrans Caltrain, Caltrans yard there. There is also a railroad way there, if you're not uh aware of it. I used to see trains go by there all the time. Uh you know, you had the um the famous tracks that went across Mona Vista, and if you got stuck there, it was ten minutes back in the day. There were heavily loaded trains that went back and forth. I'm just going to throw this out here because Santa Cruz area where my mother is, they recently retired a railroad track. It was a very, very contentious. It was rails for banking or something. They had a uh uh like an uh an initiative uh about whether to get rid of the railroad tracks that went through Aptus. And I think that they basically are getting rid of them. They're going away. And what exactly? You have that railroad track going through there. Who uses that? Was that the permanente spur line? Does Caltrain own it? Are there are there actually trains that go through there? Is it time to start looking at retiring that section of the railroad to? I mean, it it's it's feasible. I mean, it's we need to start asking these questions. I don't know who uses that anymore. Is it a relic? Is it time to turn it into a trail? You could build a lot of housing along that roadbed. Um so I'm just going to throw that out there because we don't know. Are trains going to be not used in that area? I don't think Caltran goes Caltrain. The one that goes up to the city for the ballgames, I don't think they go through there. So we need to have that discussion now. Uh because you you also have retention ponds and creeks since there's, I think there's a creek that goes back there too. So if you guys could discuss the train situation, I would appreciate it. Uh the other one, let's see, the other the Homestead Villa one. Oh, okay. That area, okay, I went to Homestead High School. I went to Cupertino Junior High. I'm very familiar with that area. I I think that the thirty is pushing it a little bit. That is a very, very tight road back in there. You also have a lot of traffic coming in from um the road that goes past Cupertino Junior High runs Homestead out to El Camino. Um and I think there's a load of traffic there. So maybe ten or twenty is better. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. And our main our remaining hands up in Zoom are Lisa Warren and V J Kazi. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I I don't want to forget to say this, so I'm going to say it. I I haven't heard much talk about um the the tally score, so to speak, for the comments from both the survey and the mapping exercise. Uh but I just want to point out that I spent hours doing that, and I went through those things multiple times as it kept going forward and changing. None of my comments are involved so in the report, I think a hundred and thirty plus pages. Um so don't know what happened to me. And I just hope it didn't happen to anyone else. And so that on bub, the Apple lease buildings, many, a few of them, three or four, were sold recently in the last few years. And at the time, I questioned if Apple really wanted to stay there, why didn't they buy them? So I just think that's something to note. And I also heard a council member say that there's in some cases on bub or all cases, that there's quote, no interest at all from the home from the property owner. Do we know that? Did we get no's? Solid, steady no's? No interest? Or was there just no response? Because I don't want that to be in the dialogue if it's not a fact. I, you know, it's it's late in the game here. Um I wouldn't mind if all the other missing maps were at least flashed up for people to say, oh, yeah, there might be a site there. I just think it's wrong to eliminate areas completely and not have you guys like Outback. You didn't wasn't anywhere. Someone called it out, and now hopefully we're talking about it. I I think you need to remember, and I don't think you have time to do this correctly tonight, but I really hope you're not planning on having a finished product tonight. I think with all the discussion that goes on tonight for, what, potentially seven hours? How do you remember what you talked about last night? And how do you go east to west and then remember where you might want to have gone back to and discussed more? I just think it's not enough time. I know we are in a time crunch, but that is not your fault. And I don't want the city to suffer from bad decisions because there has been delay over delay over delay on this whole thing. I I know there's a lot of moving parts, but you know, site selection should have been priority from day one. Because that's a given. And you know how to do that. I just think you really need to think about that. Um and I have other seconds I have time for probably. Yeah. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, well, I you know what? One thing I'll say is that I I understand the sentiment uh expressed here. Um but with regard to the um sequel process, you know, we do have a tier one and tier two side of things. Um I know that staff has been keeping track of notes on on these various items, but um you you know, what what I would suggest, since we have a couple of more maps to go through, is that we do that, uh since, you know, that's the set expectation. Um we take a look at map P uh and then um I believe it was map originally number twenty-two. So Luke, if you could take us through map P, um we could then get uh some questions on it. And it looks like map P is the, again, Creston Farlap Neighborhood.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. Uh this is the final neighborhood map, and then we'll be looking at the uh map that includes the former Outback Steakhouse site on Deans. Uh the map here now is the Creston Farlap Neighborhood in the um northwest corner of the city. There are three sites here. I believe two of them are single family homes. One is a small office. These are all seen as lower density, fairly small lot sites, um one A, one B, and one C. Um and are fairly widely spread out um throughout the Creston Farlap Neighborhood. Um that is really all I have about to add on on these. Um again, there's a total of thirty-one units throughout this neighborhood. And I'm happy to hand it back to city council, and then we can move on to the Outback Steakhouse site discussion.
Thank you, Luke. And so, oh, gosh, I I apologize. I need to reopen the public comment. There is still a a public uh hand uh raised. And so um sorry about that. Let let me go to V J. V J, um uh all apologies. Um please provide your your commentary.
Um thanks, Mayor Paul and the council. I I'll keep it short because it is uh it's a time crunch. I I like to go back to my uh previous comment on the vacant land that I had. I understand it probably doesn't meet the guidelines. So I just want to confirm if it if a property doesn't qualify under this guidelines. So uh can the residents still propose a uh, you know, a plan to actually uh build up housing there? And if so, uh what's the procedure to follow that? Because this is this is a vacant lot, which is right kind of in in the midst of all residences, even though it's zoned M L. It's spacing townhomes. And we have single family homes in all the directions. So I I I think I mentioned about the property earlier uh today and on eight sixteen. But uh just wanted to kind of get that information even for general public as well, you know? If if a property doesn't qualify for one of uh as one of these tier one or two properties, what's the procedure? Do we still have to be, can we still uh put a concept to kind of build a residence there?
Okay, thank you, V J. Um so let's uh go ahead and uh bring this back. Um did did staff want to speak to that uh question?
Yeah, I I could try and take that. I believe uh Mr. Kasi, uh which uh we've traded emails on the property. He has an industrially zone site that has, I believe, auto uses on two sides. There are some residential uh properties, townhomes, I believe, in the neighborhood, but it's a six thousand or so square foot lot that I believe Mr. Kasi wants to build a home on. So the issue would really be getting land use changes to allow for residential use. Um if you wanted to proceed with that. In terms of being a housing element site, again, it's about six thousand square feet, so it's well below a half an acre. And is currently not designated for housing. And I my understanding is that he just wanted to build a one residence for his family. So I think you would need to go through the usual procedure to get the land uses changed to allow that.
Okay. Well, um, thanks very much, Luke. And uh once again, Luke introduced map P. And so are there any uh questions or comments from council on map P? Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, so there are three areas, and none of them have owner interest. Um so I am curious. But then they are identified as tier one. So I'm curious, how is the likelihood of being developed by these three property owners? Are they, they're all, what's the current use, I guess? I going back to the same question, what's the current use? How likely they are to change their use?
I uh believe two of them are single family residential with one of them on one C being a a small office. Uh these sites were recommended as tier one by the Planning Commission. And again, I I think part of it had to do with the dispersal of units throughout the city that Creston Farlap did not have a lot of opportunities or any large sites where you're able to get a lot of housing. So in order to get some properties over in this portion of the city, these are the three that were put as uh tier one sites. Um but yeah, they're currently, again, they they don't have a large amount of development potential relative to many of the sites we've looked at. There's a total of thirty-one unit potential between the three of them.
So it sounds like the likelihood of being developed for these three sites would be not too much different from the bub road site. Maybe even less. Because the bub road site at least is owned by people who are in the business of owning the land and maybe develop and trade, right?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, um um with these particular sites, we recognize these are small sites. And at the Planning Commission uh hearing, we did recommend uh potentially eliminating any sites that had very small um uh yield and that did not have owner interest. However, uh because the Planning Commission had an interest in um finding sites on the western half of the city, uh they did um place these particular they rec- they recommended keeping these sites on the inventory.
Seems is this page not shared? It seems we are sharing a different screen. Oh, okay, yeah. So these are the three sites. They are not very small. They are actually big enough site.
In in the grand scheme of um how many units?
Oh, over point five acres, right?
Right. And and that is why they were identified as potential sites, and that is why the Planning Commission placed them on the sites. However, we do have to realize that we have a pretty large um number that we need to hit. And the more sites that we uh, you know, have that there that we know that have less likelihood of development, uh it's going to be a heavier lift to try to convince H C D that those sites will all develop in this site uh in this cycle. Um and so as a result, again, as as staff, we would continue to recommend that we we look at sites where there is owner interest. Um and and we had recommended that the smaller sites with smaller um yield uh potentially uh not be included, but there was an interest in looking at sites on the western half of the city. And that's why these sites were included.
Okay, thank you. But it seems the bub road sites have a higher uh value, I think, in terms of convincing H C D, but just my opinion. Okay, bye. Uh thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Vice Mayor Chow. And next we have Councilmember Moore. And Vice Mayor Chow, that was your time, by the way. So uh Councilmember Moore?
Okay, um yeah, thank you. And and my question, I guess, is kind of along the same line as as the the vice mayor. Um I just have a a general concern with this mixture of of properties that that had um uh interest or not. Uh I just have a different question. Um the last time we had the the housing element, um we had scenario A and scenario B, and I recall there being um maybe five to seven properties in 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 each scenario, something around that order, like this is definitely less than ten. Um but I I believe about five to seven sites. And and this time, it it seems like I've got pages upon pages. Would you happen to know how many um uh assessors parcel numbers were we are looking at for this? Um and maybe don't don't just let's go by address, because I know if if we go that route, you could say, well, the Valco property had multiple assessors parcel numbers. So just just by address, um how how many are we looking at trying to balance here? Because it just it seems like um this prod process is uh um a lot more unwieldy. It's taking us a lot of time. Um and I'm just kind of thinking about that in terms of all the cities that are that are in this process as well. But um yeah, could could someone tell me how many properties we actually have as as total?
I believe there's fifty-six individual properties. Uh there may be a couple that aren't um developed, so they don't have an address like the one Cleo Avenue site we looked at tonight. But um there's fifty-six individual properties that are on the tier one list. That's not not including the pipeline projects.
Okay, and and just from from a planner's perspective, and I I imagine you talk to planners from other cities, um have have you had conversations about this process and how how it differs from before? I'm just kind of curious about how you're finding this experience. Um just just kind of any any anything you'd like to share about that, that just, you know, I'd I'd like to hear it because it's just, it looks really difficult, and I'm wondering what your thoughts are about it. And yeah, I thank you. That's it.
Um I'm I'm fine to share a couple of thoughts. I think first and foremost is the arena numbers are so much higher. So, you know, in City Cupertino, you went from one thousand sixty-four to four thousand five hundred and eighty-eight. So you you went up fourfold, which is going to drive you to look at more sites and higher densities than you typically would look at. I think the second thing for cities in the Bay Area, it's a challenge too, because you're more built out. So you're looking for sites that have the potential to redevelop. You may be looking at more s- small sites. Um you're looking at now through A F F H, not necessarily so much in Cupertino, but trying to disperse sites more throughout larger areas. So it it has changed a lot, both in terms of the numbers, um the site totals, um things like the A F F H requirements, which people are still trying to figure out as they go. So um it is a different dynamic. If you went through this the last time, I mean, I I look at Cupertino, you had several large properties that, given the size of those sites, you were able to get to your arena pretty easily. Um several of those sites we have in the pipeline. But I think because your arena is considerably higher and the goal of trying to get properties throughout the city, that's why we just have so many more sites. Um I think it would be different if you were just looking at large properties, say, on Stevens Creek or Deans or Homestead. Um that would that would limit the amount of sites, but um I I I think this is something that's shared by a lot of cities, is this housing element process is quite different than if you went through it before.
Hmm, thank you for that. Thanks.
Okay, uh thanks very much. And um yeah, I I can I can definitely uh I can definitely attest that it's a very different housing element process than before. Um so so I was part of the uh process about seven years ago, a little more than seven year years ago. And uh it it was, in the end, we decided to to select three sites. Uh they were all viable. Um and with regard to the um the the development, you you could the, the development, y- you could see it over time. We had something like a thousand, I think it was fifty seven or something like that, um, in our last arena requirement. And so, uh, between three sites, we, we did cover, uh, those numbers. And Valco was out allocated four hundred units at the time. So, um, and, and it was not part of our, you know, primary, uh, numbers, so. Um, okay, Councilmember Moore, you still have your hand up. Did you want to speak on, uh, this site?
Uh, well, I do have a slightly technical question, um, not particularly on this site, but in general. Uh, so we, we have spoken about wanting to retain retail and, and, and expressed a, a real, a real concern. And I see this, um, because I, I think we're already, we're already at a point where for the, for the size of the city and the number of, uh, available sites, um, we're, we're already seeing that this is a challenge. So we had some, some number over, over fifty sites that we're, we're looking at to try to make this work. And that's this, this round. The next round, uh, well, I, I'm glad I'm not going to be here for it, honestly. Because I, I just, I don't know how it's going to, how it's going to get done. Um, and so my concern is, is how, how is this going to progress? You're going to end up essentially needing to take, take neighborhoods. I know, I know people are balking at having developments, uh, in neighborhoods around in the neighborhood homes at this point. And I, the next go around, it's going to get even tougher. Um, and, and I can see, uh, large areas needing to be, um, redone, and with, we're not going to have a choice about that. Um, so with regards to retail in the EIR, uh, are, it seems to me that we need to be having some sense of a policy that it isn't just the housing, but we've got to have some sense for how much retail is going to be retained in the commercial areas which have it, so that in the EIR that will be addressed. Um, it, it can't simply be, we're going to look at the dwelling units per acre at a commercial site. And then we come back a few months late down the road and say, uh, our policy is that we, you need to retain that retail at that site. That we are not going to have this, we're not going to have the retail sales tax base completely removed. We're not going to have those retail local services and, and things that people are talking about. Wanting to make sure that we have for the residents to have some shopping nearby, some, you know, places to eat, et cetera. And, um, uh, so how is, how does that get handled? Um, because all we're designating at this point is the residential, um, density. Thank you. But so the question is, what are we going to do about the retail? Essentially, the retail density, um, for an EIR. Thank you.
Right. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And I'll go ahead and, uh, bring this over to, uh, so we have site, oh, uh, that, that it should be map P, right, at this time?
Yeah, yes, yeah, there we go.
Okay. Um, and then we were going to go over map twenty two. Uh, is a slide available for that?
Uh, yes, there should be. It may take a minute to pull that up because it's not on this same presentation.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and pull map twenty two?
Okay, thank you. Yes, this is, okay, so we're looking at the north De Anza Boulevard, um, area, which does not have a listing on the sites inventory because there were no sites recommended for this, um, area within the city. Uh, uh, running up the middle in that sort of orange color is De Anza Boulevard, running north to south. The site shown in the pinkish color is on the south side of Valley Green Drive. It fronts onto De Anza Boulevard. It's about an acre and a half. And this is the former Outback Steakhouse, uh, Outback Steakhouse site that was part of the discussion last night. Um, so we've indicated that we pulled this map together today. Um, that's all I had to say at this time. And, uh, I could turn it back to council and staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I, I would, um, I would suggest that we place it as a tier two site so that it could be studied in the sequel analysis. And that would keep our options open as well. So that, that would be my, my suggestion. Um, Councilmember Moore, you have a hand raised?
Uh, I respectfully, Mayor, I actually would put this as a tier one project, um, and, uh, thirty to fifty dwelling units per acre.
I, and, and I think that if you put it as a tier one project and there was actually some movement with regard to, you know, other things that might affect the property, then we would have time to be able to, um, you know, make the requisite, uh, adjustments. So I, I really, I don't have any particular, you know, strong preference. I, I, I just think that, you know, given the, um, the circumstances, i- it might make a little bit more sense to put it on, um, on, on, on a, on a tier where we could potentially, you know, uh, green light it, so to speak, after, after the sequel. But I mean, it's not, it's not something that I, I, I think is really critically, um, you know, preclusive either way as to what are options end up being.
Um, may, may I continue on this particular site? What I, what, what bothers me is that the, the county purchased it. And we had our discussion, um, back in June, June, uh, June eighteenth, twenty twenty one regarding this, uh, um, property and Supervisor Semidion, uh, came and spoke about it. Um, what concerns me is that this property has now been sitting vacant. Uh, and it, it could have, uh, some use at, at this time. Um, and it potentially for some kind of, uh, uh, low income job training, um, so office, uh, for some, some use for, uh, helping the, the jobs homeless situation. We have this homelessness task force in this space and it's just sitting there doing, doing nothing at this point. And, and that, it seems, I don't, it, it's, it's really disappointing. The county bought it and they, they, they took away a retail area. It, um, um, potentially could have had, for thinking of the scope of the city and the cost to rent spaces, it could have had lower rents, um, for, uh, startup companies, um, in, uh, incubator space is anything, but it, it's just sitting there doing nothing. So I, I kind of want to say it's, put it as tier one to try to get this project in gear and get the county to, to consider it. And, and here we are concerned about our retail space going away. And they bought on a, on a commercial lot and just shut it down essentially. So I'm, I'm quite frustrated by what they've done. And I would like to see some, see it go to some good use rather than just sitting there as it is.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I did stop your time by about the amount of time that I was speaking, so you're, you're at two thirty on this one. So Vice Mayor Chow?
Um, so, yeah, I, it seems this site has a very likelihood of being developed there. Right? Since the county bought it, even if they swap, if then they have other plans, something has to be done, right? So, and then this is in a location where we could actually, uh, loan for fifty units per acre. And that it's one point five acres, so it's large enough, not like those other tiny sites. We actually have zoned thirty units per acre. And so I'm trying to understand the rationale to first not include the site and then only consider for tier two. Are there other things that I don't know? That we, they, they might not develop? And they, and they, these units could come as low income. They actually could be low income, build as low income, not just contest. So.
For the mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Yes, please, Pew, go ahead.
Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, we know about as much as you do on this issue. Um, there was a presentation from, um, the county to the, to the council in June twenty twenty one about a potential negotiation occurring with another property owner for the Simeon property. Uh, my understanding is that the Simeon property is three times as large as this particular site. And that there is a potential to provide a lot more affordable housing, um, within the city. And so the county is trying to leverage, uh, this particular site for the other site. And as a result, um, you know, uh, it, it would appear that, um, you know, however, that particular site does not currently have any residential designation on it. And that may be cause for concern for the county. And as a result, um, there hasn't been much movement on that. But, um, so that's about as much as we know.
So in case the two properties were swapped, are we saying that this property won't be a bit developed into housing? I know they are, might just swap, but this one will be developed into maybe market rate housing?
I am not aware of any, anything about the deal itself, but all I know is, uh, what was, uh, disclosed.
Hmm. Okay, so this site is currently zoned for office, industrial, commercial and residential, basically anything under.
Correct, it could have residential uses up to twenty five dwellings to be able.
Oh, so currently it's twenty five units per acre already, okay. And they could also build how office too, yeah.
Um, we do not have much office, um, allocation left in our general plan, and that is completely discretionary. So that the council does, uh, can regulate how much office is developed on a particular site. So we don't have much office to give away, um, particularly.
So if a site currently the use include office? And then if someone wants to use a state law to streamline a project and they claim they can build office, can they do that? They cannot.
Uh, only if we have the office, uh, square footage available, which.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we don't have further hands raised at this time. And so let's go to our members of the public. We have two hands raised from the public, so Warren and Jennifer. And so a reminder, uh, please have your hands raised in Zoom or send an email to, uh, cityclerk@cupidino.org uh, before the time that the first person is done speaking. So Lisa, welcome. You'll have up to three minutes.
Uh, thanks. So this is a perfect example. This map, and I'd already been thinking of it, but this is the right map to, um, I can't see it. There's something on my screen. Um, okay, Bambly Drive. Bambly Drive is a bunch of low slung office buildings, just like on Bub. And there's been talking over the years about doing housing over there. And, you know, it's going to be the same thing. Oh, there are leases by Apple, there is that, the other. I, I don't think Apple owns all of them, if any. Um, but was that area, why was that area not considered? I, you know, like I said, over the years, many people have suggested that site. And I think when these maps that have no site recommended on them aren't shown to the public, that the few of us who are involved in this, you, you don't, it's not triggered. So I, again, think that it was a mistake to have no access on the balancing act for people to go and add sites to areas, mapped areas that didn't have sites already selected by the consultant or staff. So this is just a good example. And I do believe that Bambly should be considered, and I definitely think that Outback should be tier one. That's it.
Okay, thank you, uh, Lisa. And medicine clerk, did any emails come in from the public?
No, Mayor, no, Mayor, we received nothing.
Okay, so let's go to Jennifer, and we also have Scott Connolly, whose hand is raised. So Jennifer, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. Can you all put the map up for P, the Creston Farlap Road? It seemed to have gone away, then we had a big black square. Can you guys put map P up? Okay, we're not putting up map P. All right. Um, I, you know, I, I think that that, I think if I remember correctly, I think there were three properties, if I'm not, okay. Um, there were three properties up here and I'm a little bit concerned if we're going to be doing anything really, really large up there because those are very small roads back there. And you've got that constrained area where you come down the hill to like the Blue Pheasant. And, uh, if people are not aware, there are fire danger areas back there. Um, and I think that it's important to remember that. And there's that wonderful railroad track again. Okay, interesting. Um, okay, the next one, let's just go talk about the, uh, the Outback. Okay, I must have fallen asleep last night when you guys were talking about the Outback. You know, I, I hate to say this, but I really miss that restaurant. And Lisa's correct, it's a, it's a shame that nothing's, nothing's happened to it in the last two years or year and a half, or Kitty said that. Um, it, it really should be put to some use. And I think that it is a much better site for some type of low, um, let's just throw it out there, supportive housing than doing some type of supportive housing back there in the back of the Valco area. Sorry, I called it a dump, but it, it, you can't, and I, I think I made an epiphany tonight. No one can develop the Siemens property until Valco is built. Either that or they're going to have to run a road back there through a construction site to try to access the back of that property. Um, there's no amenities back there. Uh, it's just, you know, what are you going to do? Walk up, hike up to Stevens Creek? We could send a shuttle back there, but I think that if you're going to be doing supportive housing, if you're going to be doing it correctly, this site, um, the Outback is a much better location. Yes, it may be a really, really great place to grab for tech again. Or, you know, whatever we're going to do with it. But I, I say, let's don't do supportive housing in the back end of the Valco site because it's not feasible. Um, at this time, Valco, I don't know when Valco is going to be built. I, what I say twenty years, we'll see twenty years from now. But, um, I think that if we're, you know, we don't have any supportive housing in Cupertino. I think that if we're going to, and you know, I'm sorry, HCD is going to have to give us credit if we build supportive housing. I haven't, HCD has been very demanding, but I have not seen them giving any kudos to cities that do supportive housing. All they want is built, built. Uh, so yes, let's do supportive housing there and do it right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. And, uh, we are, uh, back to council here. Uh, we've gone through the sixteen maps as well as an additional map that includes the Outback Steakhouse, uh, site, the shopping center. And so, uh, what I'll do now is refer to our, uh, city manager Pamela Wu. Pamela, do you have a suggestion as to, uh, how to proceed? Um, and I do see, Councilmember, I see both of your hands, the virtual one and the actual one. So, um, let, let me, let me do this. Uh, Pamela, before I get to you, um, un- unless you have a very quick comment that you want to make, but I, I'll go.
Mister Mayor, there is one more, a member of public has their hand, uh, up too.
Oh, is, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Scott, I, this is not personal, Scott. I, I forgot the prior last hand as well, Vijay. So, um, let, let's go ahead and take Scott's comment. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor Paul, thank you, and no, uh, no harm, no foul. Uh, my wife says every once in a while I say something smart, so maybe this will be one of those times. But, um, I would like to, uh, uh, just mention Councilmember Moore's suggestion of the Outback being a tier one site. So my, my understanding is that the county over the last three years has been using Measure A funds to buy sites that they think are appropriate for one hundred percent affordable housing. And the reason they're buying these sites, and Outback is one of them, is that they buy them unentitled because other residential developers, uh, want to get into contracts that don't close until the entitlements are secured. So the county comes in and buys these sites because they know that the affordable housing developers don't have the funds to close unentitled because affording, affordable housing developers, uh, generally acquire properties with acquisition loan. And so I think whether the bureaucracy of the county is, is playing games relative to trying to trade up to a bigger site, um, that, like Ed Pew would know that, and I'm sure that everything that she said is accurate. That, like Ed Pew would know that, and I'm sure that everything that she said is accurate. But I would say that of all of the sites, of every single one of these fifty plus sites that you guys have looked at this evening and yesterday, this is the one site where I would be hard pressed to say this is a one hundred percent guarantee that this property, if the county can develop it and this can be a tier one site, will be one hundred percent affordable housing, zero market rate housing. And the county ultimately won't develop it. What they've done with these fifteen plus sites they've purchased is they hold them and they go out privately to the affordable developer world and they take RFPs and they make a decision on which affordable group is going to develop. This has happened on Parkmore Avenue in San Jose recently. That's just broken ground. It's happening in numerous locations. So much so to the point that the county has stopped purchasing these affordable sites because they have created a pipeline that's sufficient for them. So again, the county always moves slow. I would suggest someone reach out to Ron Griswold at the county, who's in charge of, or a member of the real estate department. But I would think this is a site that, that would be a hundred percent affordable and really take a deep crack into the very low and moderate shortfall. I would also say that when you're looking at density for this site, there are no homes around it. It's on a major transit near services. You know, an affordable housing group, if you went out to the market and said, hey, charities housing, how many units would you like to build on this site? They would tell you a hundred and fifty unit. And so I just say that as a, as food for thought, but boy, of all the sites, this is, the county bought this eighteen months ago for the purpose of having a chip to build affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. And let's go back to council at this time. And Madam City Manager, did you have a, a quick comment before we take a round of council comments here?
Not necessarily, Mr. Mayor. So I was just going to suggest that we have concluded all the maps. If we could potentially take, at the end of this exercise, after taking all the council's comments, if we can take a potentially fifteen minute break, a recess for planning staff to consolidate what they have heard tonight and then come back to you to walk you through the comments that, you know, from last night and tonight.
Sure, absolutely. So I'll, I'll take a couple of minutes of comments from council in terms of the fact that we are checking back in after the last round of public comments. So we have Vice Mayor Chow followed by Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Way. So a couple of minutes each at this time. Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, I'm calculating from the numbers Scott suggested. I think for this site, we should study for seventy-five units per acre as tier one site. And that seems to be in line with the number, the hundred percent affordable housing the county might be looking for. At least we studied that so that when they request it, we don't have to do another environmental study. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. I was wondering if someone from staff could make a recommendation for a density at for the hundred percent affordable and also what is our most dense development that we have in this city? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And let's go to staff on this one then. See, Luke and Pew, your cameras are both on.
I'm just racking my brain about that, Mr. Mayor.
About the most dense? Okay, yeah.
It might be Hampton's at, I thought something hit sixty, not sure.
I believe ultimately it was seventy-five or eighty-five dwellings to the acre, one of the two.
So what hurts us if we do a hundred and is a hundred, is that like an insane amount where they would have to be doing underground parking? And it would just make it super expensive?
I, I will tell you that we've had one conversation, at least with one developer, that said that for rental developments, they are not looking for anything less than a hundred and fifty dwellings to the acre. That's what's making it viable for them these days, given the high cost of land.
And how tall would that be?
Probably in the hundred and twenty range. And then David Masterton can also help with that.
Okay, but so we, we've got the, the senior BMR building at Westport was okay, okay, okay. So, but that, that worked. And what was, would you happen to know what the density of, of that was?
It's hard to, yeah. Yeah, it's two hundred and sixty-nine, fifty-seven minus the, I'd have to do some math.
Because you need the, the area that it's sitting on. Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see something. I, I concur with the seventy-five. I'm just wondering if we might want to go, go even higher with that.
I will state that the hundred percent affordable housing developments do get an eighty percent density bonus. Outright.
Okay, a question on that. Does that density bonus need to have an affordable component like some cities do or, or you're saying?
In order to be able to get to that density bonus, you do need to provide a certain percentage as affordable.
So you're saying that a one hundred percent affordable complex would have density bonus units, which would be market rate?
Not necessarily, but that depends on their programming. I guess Chris has turned his video on. I think he can help answer that question.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think in practice where I've seen that done is this has been for a hundred percent affordable project.
And are the density bonus units affordable? Do they use them for affordable? Oh.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So I, well, I, I think this, the seventy-five feet seems reasonable, but once they've gone to the density bonus realm, they've got the, the waivers for the height. So you'd, you'd want to pick a density that even with the, with the bonus, you're trying to, if you're trying to have seventy-five feet be your maximum, you kind of have to work, work backwards from there on the density. So if, if there could be some guidance to try to stay within that envelope, the BMRs in this, that senior unit, it was forty, forty-eight senior BMRs for that height. And I'm just trying to think of that footprint that it, that it's sitting on extrapolated over the whole project. I could see you getting to like.
Let's, let's let you pontificate offline there. Let me, since it's probably in excess of five minutes, I inadvertently didn't hit the button, but it's been quite a while. Let's go to Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So my question actually is for the staff. If I understand it correctly, now we have a Siemens site on tier one. And if we put Outback's site on tier one, I don't think both sites are available for tier one, if I understand it correctly. The county does have the Outback site. I do believe the Siemens site is owned by Apple, if I'm correctly, and the county is doing some kind of a negotiation with Apple. I don't know the result of it. But I do think if we put both on tier one, that is not going to happen. So what, do the staff know anything about it? Or shall we put one on tier one, one on tier two, just so that we know one will happen, the other. But I do agree, both need to be on the environmental impact report, so we're ready to develop that. Whether, which one becomes reality? I'm not sure, sure we know right now. So can the staff have some highlight on it or information on it?
Any guidance, staff, as to whether matters?
I I think adding the Outback Steakhouse site as a tier two site gives you the flexibility. Again, I, my understanding is that the county's hesitation continues to be that the other site does not currently allow residential uses. But they are very interested in that particular site. Considering they would get three times as many affordable units.
Intentionally add a swap or not both sides?
Not both sides, no.
Right. So I, I would suggest we do one tier one, one tier two. Because that's more realistic for HCD to know that, yeah, one of them is going to become a housing site.
Pamela, your hand is up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've contemplated not become a planner for tonight. But before we wrap up for the presentation, I just want to put a few thoughts for council. I've heard a lot of discussion on the Outback Steakhouse site. Let us come back, digest those comments for a bit. I do want to kind of put some parameters as we're putting together a proposal for you. There are two sites that's been contemplated. Our original proposal coming forward to you is to put Outback site as a tier two. So it gives the city a little bit more flexibility. For some reason, if both sites want to be developed at the same time, the EIR has it covered. But we're not obligated to have them both developed as tier one. So that's one option. In terms of the density, if this is affordable housing, hundred percent, fifty percent, whatever it is, they're eligible for additional waivers, incentive, extensions and whatnot. So at a seventy-five density per acre ratio, imagine how much more this can be and also look around what's around it. So planning likes to talk about compatibility. So right now you're surrounded by, I want to say maybe a four to five story apartment buildings, probably in the area. With seventy-five units per acre will definitely be much taller, much dense. So let us do some sort of a digestion and come back to you with a proposal.
Okay. Councilmember Willie, any comments at this time?
As I understand it, staff's going to go off tonight and spend a few minutes and then come back to us with their digest and then we'll make our final comments. And so I just assume save it for that.
I think that's probably the best thing to do. Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is still raised. Did you have that inadvertently up or did you want to make a?
Final question, even if there is a swap happens, Outback is not going to sit vacant for eight more years, right? So what, so something will be done before the end of the cycle to both of them, I suppose. More likely than the other sites who are currently occupied. So then, then I'm just wondering, why doesn't it make sense to put them both on tier one when there are other tier one sites that are currently occupied and well running business? Just, I'm trying to wrap my head around. Or do we, can we find out what exactly is the plan for Outback if there were a swap or what's Apple's intention? Is it at all possible to find out? Thank you.
Pew, you had a hand raised very briefly, but I, I will point out that we don't have any indication that if this was a land swap, that it would be made in housing. And so it wouldn't necessarily be all that legitimate to say just because it'll get developed, it'll be, you know, valid for, for the purposes of our what we're required to, to perform here. So I, I don't see hands raised further. So it's right before nine. Let's go ahead and reconvene at nine fifteen. And I think that should give staff enough time to consolidate our comments over the course of the last couple of nights. I know that they were working hard at doing so for the previous evening. I think that, you know, people have been keeping track of our discussion up to this point. So we will see you in approximately sixteen or seventeen minutes at nine fifteen.